Welcome to the Delnar County Board of Supervisors Meeting, August 22, 2017. We have just returned from closed session and will be going back into closed session after the board meeting today. Liz, is there anything to report out from this morning's meeting?
No reportable action.
Okay, very good. All right. At this point, I'd like to call our regular session to order since it's 10 o'clock and take this opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you Supervisor Callen, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction of new employees. Uh-oh. Good morning Sheriff.
Morning.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Doing outstanding.
Good.
Anything you can do about the smoke?
I cannot.
Okay.
But our friends up north are working on it.
I bet they are.
So, I got my fancy hat on, so we know what that means. I'm here to introduce two new deputies today.
Outstanding.
I'm excited to do that, so if I can have Kyle Stevens and Drew Good, please?
Do you need a drum roll or anything like that?
They sort of make that sound when they walk.
Big boys.
So what I'd like to do today is introduce you to Kyle and Drew and tell you just a little bit about them, and then I would like to administer the oath of office. So I'll make this as quick as I can. I feel small all of a sudden.
That's a good thing.
That's safe, that's the good news. So to my right is Kyle Stevens. You may recognize him, he's actually been an employee with our organization for several years now, with the lion's share of that time in our correctional division. He has shown an interest to go to the operational division, specifically patrol, and entered a competitive process to do that, came out on top, and for the last several months, he's been working on our court security team, and soon, in several months, he'll be headed off to the Police Academy in Eureka. So he is our current deputy recruit, and will soon enter the academy, and after the academy, begin the FTO program, and you'll see him out on patrol. So we're very excited about that because Kyle is a vetted employee that has done very well for this community and the organization. So it's going to be great to see him move on to a path that he's seeking, and as far as retention goes, we already have several years into Kyle, and like I said, he's proven to be a great team member, and I'm confident that he's going to continue to do that as he moves on the patrol. To my left is Drew Good, which is another story I'm excited about. I've had the privilege of knowing Drew since he was a young man. He grew up in this community, was a school resource officer when he was a student at Delnar High. He went through the Explorer Program and did very well, and Drew has spent his life here in this community, recently attended the Police Academy in Eureka, did very well at the academy, and we had the opportunity to hire him on when he graduated, and he is currently in his second week of FTO. Right, so he's working in our jail right now, learning about that. So with that, that is Deputy Stevens and Deputy Good, and I would like to administer the oath of office.
Please proceed.
Okay. I just want you to stand over here for me. You're going to need to repeat after me, except for the say your name part. When I say say your name, actually say your name. I'm going to go through small parts of this, so you don't have to remember too much, because I feel like that's another common mistake people make, too. I've had to do it now, the where and the when, and it gets tough, so we're going to go slow. You ready? I'm just trying not to upset them. Have I mentioned how big they are? So I will raise my right hand. You ready? Okay. I state your name.
I agree with this.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Deputy Sheriff.
Congratulations.
Any questions for the new deputies at all?
Supervisors?
No, welcome.
Welcome, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Sheriff. Other new employees? No? Very good. All right, since it's 10:05, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold those comments until the board takes up that matter. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment today? Very good, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board, and we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda at this time.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion on the floor.
A second.
And a second. Public comment on the consent agenda. Good morning.
Good morning. Rather smoky morning, but it's a good one.
It sure is.
The union wants to be a willing partner in working with the county in assuring that the ranch staff is minimally impacted by today's decision. We recently sent the county an RFI and are still waiting for a response. We are scheduled to meet Thursday, August 24th. Though we recognize the urgency of the situation, one meeting in three weeks does not allow the union sufficient time to address the issues and concerns over staff. The complexities of closing the ranch extends beyond the program and facility. This impacts workers and their families, especially for those who live both on and off the property. Some of the ranch employees have been there for almost 20 years. We believe that enough time should be given for both sides to work on a way to minimize the hurt this will cause the workers and their families. They deserve to be treated with dignity and respect and given a fair shake. Our goal is to ensure that they remain employed. We ask that you give us time to hopefully make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment on consent agenda items. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to budget transfer items. We have budget transfer item 08-09, in the amount of $4,200.
Vote for approval.
That's it. And we have a motion on the table.
Second.
Motion and a second. Public comment on budget transfer item 08-09. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go ahead and take up our first item under General Government, which is review and discuss the findings and recommendations within the 2016-17 final grand jury report applicable to Delnar County. And I believe our county administrative officer, Mr. Serena, you're going to address this for us today, please?
Yes. So the process of responding to a grand jury report for the Board of Supervisors is to focus on any direct request from the grand jury for a response, or for the appointed departments over which the board presides overseas, is to deal with financial or fiscal issues and/or personnel. So as I've gone through this, I've worked with the departments that actually have the divisions underneath them and have, along with them, put together this draft response for the board to consider. We have 90 days in which to respond, we're about 60 days into that at this point. The elected departments are responded to directly by the elected official with a copy coming to the Board of Supervisors. So the focus of this is on those general fund departments and other non-general fund departments that are completely under the auspices of the Board of Supervisors. And in looking at this with the department heads, this response right now is reflective of their input, as well as some input from administration.
Thank you very much. Comments from the board at this time, before we open it to public comment. Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and open this up for public comment to the draft response that we currently have available for public review. Any comments from the public on the current draft response to the grand jury? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Jay, this will carry over to our next board meeting, correct?
No, the action that's being requested today is to approve the
Wow.
...document with any amendments, and at this point, there are none, and to forward that to the presiding judge of the Superior Court.
Is the board ready to take action today?
Yeah, I would move that we give direction to staff on the draft response provided and approve the response. With, since there are no amendments, direct the final document to be forwarded to the presiding judge of the Superior Court.
Second.
We have a motion on the table and a second. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. Supervisor Callen.
We had a proclamation that we approved in the consent agenda that I was hoping to read.
You were hoping to? I'd love you to.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
This proclamation of Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, September 2017, whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in California, the third leading cause of death for ages 10 to 24, the second for 25 to 34-year-olds, and the suicide rate of Delnar County is almost two and a half times the average county, California county. And whereas 50% of mental illness occurs before the age of 14, and 75% before 24. And whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk from seeking lifesaving help. And whereas this causes over 1 million suicide attempts in the United States annually. And suicide is preventable, and prevention starts with recognizing the warning signs and taking them seriously. And whereas by increasing awareness of suicide, as a public health issue, zero attempts supports citizens to reduce the stigma by talking about mental health and by gaining new knowledge of suicide and suicide prevention. Now therefore, the Delnar County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims September 2017 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. But it further resolved that the Delnar County Board of Supervisors encourages schools, students, parents, healthcare workers, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of prevention and awareness activities designed to remove the stigma around suicide, passed and adopted this 22nd day of August, 2017.
Supervisor, please approach the desk.
Do you want me?
Please.
This is a nice meeting.
Great to see you again, it's been a short time.
I haven't been smoking salmon, I'm from Brookings, Oregon.
Supervisor, you want to present the proclamation?
Thank you very much. I'm Gordon Clay, the CitizensWhoCare.org, from Brookings, Oregon. The proclamation includes information concerning the high risk of suicide for students and citizens. Would you pass out the... I would like each one of you to look at the pledge, and if it feels right, sign it, and take one of the wristbands, and I'll explain the wristband shortly. With a typical classroom, it is likely that three students, one boy and two girls, have attempted suicide in the past year. According to the CDC in 2013, 8% of all high school students had actually acted on their suicidal thoughts. This correlates with what Curry County students reported last year in the annual wellness survey. 8.7% of 6th graders, 10.7% of 8th graders, and 10.1% of 11th graders actually said that they had attempted suicide in the 12 months prior to the survey. The California 2013-15 biannual statewide survey asked 9th and 11th graders, during the last 12 months, did you ever consider attempting suicide? 19.3% of 9th and 18.7% of 11th graders reported yes. The new report will be out in November. When students learn suicide prevention in school, they're given the resources they need to address their own suicidal feelings and/or those of their friends. As such, proper education could lead to a dramatic decrease in the suicidal thoughts and attempts among teenagers. What have we done in the community last year? We had 34 participants here in Crescent City and eight in Smith River participate in the Are You Okay program, which included suicide prevention cards, and the little Are You Okay, and suicide prevention buttons, the little semicolon buttons. We gave out 15,000 buttons in the last year here in Curry County, in Delnar County and Curry County. Our second program was a school-based program here, SOS, really promoting the 741-741 crisis number. What we know is 90% of teenagers in crisis will not call a phone line, but they will text. They don't even talk on their cell phones, but they will text, and getting this information out is very important. One of the things about 741 versus the national phone line is that the national phone line gets a counselor, but all they've got is what's in their head. The important thing about 741, it gets a counselor, but in the process, their texting has gone into a computer, been analyzed by 45 million others. By the time the counselor comes online, on their screen, it lists 72% of the people that said this are suicidal, or 42% are cutters, or things like that, and then it says the next best question to ask. And that's the most recent research on what is happening with our youth. The other thing is, it's very... It gives the person, if they freaked out or had not had the information, not remembered the information, it's all on their cell phone. What we were doing this year is producing wristbands, which I gave you one of, it's embedded in there, and we're getting kids and people to sign the pledge, in fact, yeah, sign the pledge so that we cut it back. The second thing we're doing is we've produced 16 different cards, and these are cards we're using in the bathroom. Look at schools, et cetera, you've got a captive audience, they don't have anything to do but maybe read their email, and it's zero attempts be there for others, and statements like, "Depression and anxiety are not signs of weakness, they are signs of trying to remain strong for far too long. Do not tell me the sky is the limit when there are footprints on the moon. Be strong enough to stand alone, smart enough to know when you need help, and brave enough to ask." So we're developing this throughout the county and in Curry. I hope everyone will take the pledge to break the silence around mental health and suicide and wear the yellow wristbands, carry a 741-741 crisis card, ask friends when they seem a bit off, "Are you okay?", and make the pledge to share your experience around suicide. A simple conversation can save a life. Thank you for supporting the proclamation, and we look forward to having a very successful program in Delnar County this year.
With your help, I'm sure we'll get there.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, it's past 10:15, and I believe Mr. Leitner's in the audience.
Yes, sir.
Matthew, please join us. Is Susan going to join us today?
She is, she is.
She always does. It's like, yeah, there we go.
So, good morning, everybody. Matthew Leitner, Airport Director, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and with me is Susan Doherty, our Airport Program Manager for the same organization. There it says, "Airport update on the agenda." I understand that the topic de jour, so to speak, is a runway extension, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct. That's where we like your attention focused.
Okay, very well. So with regard to that, we would just like to begin by extending our gratitude for the opportunity to talk about a potential runway extension, knowing that it's been a subject of interest for the better part of probably 15 years. What we're going to go ahead and do is I would just like to go over some of the fundamentals with respect to how we do capital improvement projects, and then go into the meetings we've had with the FAA, which we call ACIP meetings, and then the master plan, which a runway extension would have to be on. So, as many of you know, we rely upon, heavily upon, FAA Airport Improvement Plan funding, which funds 95% of our capital improvement projects. Every year, Susan and I go down to San Francisco when we meet with our Airport's District Office, which we'll do this coming October. When we're at this ACIP meeting, we present what we call a capital improvement plan, and that has all of our wishes that are essentially tangential to what we have on the master plan that need to be funded over the next seven years. And then the FAA says, "Yes, we have the funding, go ahead," with, you know, whatever, or "No, we don't." So Kylie, if you'd go to the next slide, please. Or do I have the mouse?
You have the control.
Oh, man, I'm the captain. There we go. Okay, so that is a master plan. As it says in the slides, determines long-term development plans for an airport and guidance for FAA AIP funding. Ordinarily, we put this together with a consultant. So before Susan and I go down to San Francisco, we say, "Where are we at? What do we need? How do we anticipate future events?" Going back to 2005, the runway extension came up alongside the terminal. So neither Susan nor I were there in 2005, but based on written data, this is what we ascertained. They said, "Yeah, go forth and conquer with the terminal, because we desperately need that. What you have right now is woefully inadequate. It is at this time, and it will be in the future, so get going on that." As far as your runway extension, move that down to your long-range projects. This third bullet point is kind of embarrassing for me, because when I came to town, SkyWest had announced their intentions of vacating the market, and the month after I arrived, Susan and I went down to San Francisco. And I actually, and again, I'm ashamed to admit this, I got into a shouting match with our planner, because I said, "We need a runway extension, we need a runway extension." And he said, "Absolutely not, emphatically, unambiguously, no, and we've told you that for the past, you know, seven years." Poor Susan had to endure that, and that's where we were. Okay, so why did they do what they did with regard to their no answer? The airport director at that time, and this was before BCRAA solicited SkyWest and said, "Hey, look, if you want to bring in jets, we understand that you would like a runway extension, but we need a letter of commitment in order to get this approved and expedited and get it on the master plan." SkyWest came back and they said, "No." So the FAA in turn said, "All right, well, if you want a runway extension, you need to achieve 20,000 employments," and within the presentation, and I'll get to it in a little bit, is a copy of that letter from 2005, but I would just like to read a couple of lines from it. "The ADA, which is the FAA office, determined that the revised final forecasts are inconsistent with FAA TAF. Furthermore, the airport sponsor was unable to procure an airline commitment letter from SkyWest Airlines to clearly support an aircraft fleet change to a CRJ-200 jet within the near-term planning horizon as suggested in the airport master plan. The FAA has determined that it is not reasonable to assume that employment projections at CEC will reach 20,000 pasture employments by the near-term 2009 planning year. As such, at this time, the proposed runway extension, Alternative 1, is not justified, and the FAA will only support a replacement terminal facility at CEC designed for the current demand." Once again, at the risk of being redundant, that's been repeated to us every year since, and we've tried. Okay, so that's just a recap of what I said. They said you need 20,000, and we've been working, and obviously, we're up against some headwinds right now, as you all know, but we have been working like mad to get as high as we can so we can keep going, and I'm confident that we're going to get there, but God knows, we've got a lot of challenges to smount at this juncture. So what's the best we've ever done? 14,250 in 2011. That's about, well, a little under 75% of what we need. Currently, we're under 10,000. Okay, there's a copy of the letter that I just read. Okay. Moreover, when it comes to AIP funding, as I talked about previously, I would just like to draw your attention to a couple points within this slide, especially the first one. For the following situation, a sponsor has a runway shown on their ALP and would like to build it to increase capacity. However, the airport already has adequate capacity and will continue to have adequate capacity in the foreseeable future. The project does not advance an AIP policy, the actual need does not exist. Once again, they're saying no. B, a sponsor would like to build a runway extension to attract a new class of aircraft, e.g., regional jets, or for marketing purposes. In this case, the need is speculative and not based on documented future need, the actual need does not exist. So that's their written policy in myriad forms. Okay, so back to the master plan, where are we at right now? It's on our ACIP, we had it for 2019, but they said, "No, due to our funding constraints, you've got to move it to 2022." Do we intend to pursue a runway extension once again? Absolutely, yes. However, we're going to have to wait until 2022 to talk to the FAA about getting that on our master plan. All right, so we want, we get our runway extension, or we get the approval. What does that require? As we all know, we live in the California Coastal Zone. Nothing is easy with respect to the Coastal Commission. We're going to have to do an environmental assessment. We're going to have to do an environmental assessment. We're going to have to design and extend two roads primarily. And as far as property acquisition, this is, this is a tough one, folks. 31 private parcels would have to be acquired, including 19 residences. That includes that beautiful property that is just to the west of Washington. Okay, so nearly a mile of Washington would have to be realigned along with removal of Riverside. Additional property acquisition would be required for environmental mitigation. We don't know what that would be. Construction of the road realignment, construction of runway extension and overlay, construction of mitigation, this is a low-end cost and this does not include legal action, 40 to 45 million dollars. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Really appreciate you being here. The subject matter was brought up by Supervisor Burke Witz. I'll let him carry it forward from here.
Sure.
I appreciate the valuable information you presented. Let me ask you a few questions.
Sure.
And this is about an extension, the necessity for an extension itself. You and I talked briefly about a week ago, talking about Key West. Now, Key West has a runway of 4,800 feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And they have, they have jets that, jets that land there, correct?
That is correct.
And what are those passenger jets?
737s, CRJ-700s, ERJ-145s.
So basically, over 70 passengers, right?
That is correct.
We would never be able to attract that here, well, let's say in the near future. So our runway at 5,000 feet
Yeah.
could accommodate those kinds of jets currently, right?
Right.
So what is the need then for the extension?
Well, that's, that's kind of the question that we're asking right now. What we're working on is what we have deemed a marketing, an employment problem. You know, we need to get those employments up before we can justify the excess capacity that would be necessitated.
So what we're running into is these jets, mainly the capacity of 75 passenger jets or 74, really couldn't serve this area because we couldn't get enough passenger capacity to do that. Yet there's nothing in the capacity that we could really use, which is like, what, 24 maybe, 24 passenger or something like that?
Well, historically, we've been a 30-seat niche market and we've done pretty well with that, but bear in mind, that requires an essential air service subsidy for the carrier.
Are there, very many carriers that would have 30-passenger prop jets to conserve this area?
No. And at this time, that's really been decimated because of the FAA, what's been called the 1,500-hour rule for pilots. That was a result of the Colgan incident in New York back in 2009. So, you know, historically, the regionals have attracted lower-time pilots who've built experience and then moved on to a national or a major. But when Congress implemented that rule about a half a dozen years ago, it really pinched the regional airlines and a lot of them got rid of those 30-seat airplanes because they couldn't justify the cost.
So now that we can't attract an airline that basically doesn't have those kinds of jets, what kind of airline could we attract that would service this area?
Well, I mean, we're going to have to rely on an airline that either has 50-seat capacity and what we run into there, and they do exist, is an exorbitant subsidy when it comes to EAS, which we have to be very mindful of. Other than that, you've got some nine-seat operators that are interested in markets such as ours. One of the things that, well, they offer several things, but one of the big ones is frequency and greater destinations. When Boutique bid our market last time around, they said, we'll take you to Portland and we'll take you to Oakland. You know, and one of the things we've been asking carriers is, well, what about Sacramento? You know, if they have that kind of ability. So, you know, it's, it's not to say that you can't get there with either or, but it's, it's a challenge that we face. And it's one that we, oh, God, believe me, we, we think about it constantly, don't we?
Well, considering there hasn't been much need for people going to Portland
Yeah.
and considering if you went to Oakland, you've got an hour and a half ride to get to San Francisco, plus maybe a two-hour wait, you know, because they want you to get there early, you're looking at like three and a half hours before you catch a plane. Yet we can't go to Sacramento, we can't go to San Francisco because why? Why can't we serve those areas?
Well, I mean, were you going to say something? Okay.
I can.
Okay.
I would just mention that Sacramento itself is an issue partly because the requirements in Sacramento and the costs are evidently extremely high for the carrier. And that's been an issue there. Plus
Now, we're talking about the terminal fees, is that right? That they charge the airlines?
That they charge the airlines.
Which we have to be passed on to us.
Which passes on to us and also ups the EAS subsidy. Additionally, the connections out of Sacramento aren't generally as good as the connections out of, say, Portland and out of even Oakland and San Francisco. San Francisco, I mean, we did that for a lot of years. And I think that most of us are aware of the number of flights we had canceled, the number of flights we had delayed, because every time there is a weather issue or every time those planes start getting backed up, the first one to get canceled was Crescent City. And so that's not something that any of the carriers that we've talked to are real interested in getting back to. If we had SkyWest again, then it would be San Francisco. But they all tend to have their hubs, the main hubs of operation. And so we kind of have to go, being as essential air service, with what there is out there that's being offered to us. I just wanted to mention as far as the comment you made about there not being a demand to go to Portland. We saw a demand to go to Portland and we had good employments that were being built up when Panair first started their service to us. I think those would have continued to build had Panair not had the problems they had with maintenance, with staffing, with enlarging too quickly. And so I think that Portland still is an excellent market for us, but what needs to be done is to work with a carrier to have the proper flight times so that we can connect first thing in the morning, so we can go clear across the country and get back on that evening flight instead of an overnight in Portland. And the, you know, those are some of the things we're working on.
Can I ask you another question? What is the feasibility of having a, let's say, a nine-passenger airline service between Crescent City and Medford?
It's, it's not feasible because per the EAS requirements, they have to go to either a larger or medium hub, of which Medford is neither.
Okay. And my last question to you, have we had any applicants or any inquiries from airlines? And what number of passengers would they have if we've had any inquiries?
Unfortunately Supervisor, we have had, I don't think I'm at liberty to disclose any of that information at this point. But know that we're talking to everybody we can possibly talk to and we're doing our utmost to sell this market essentially and to get the best possible options we can get. But know that we're talking to a lot of carriers.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Getlin.
Well, Matt, thank you for the candor. It's a bit foreboding when you know you're not going to have a runway extension for at least two decades. And even then, we don't know. But my concern centers around what's going to happen in the next 90 days with Panair. PDX Portland is going to close. They're going to close that terminal. Yet we're promised the EAS contract will be honored. So how is that going to work? If Portland closes, where are the two EAS subsidized flights going to emanate from and to?
Okay, so as far as Portland closing, I think, you know, that word got out, and that's an inappropriate word for the situation, because we had a conversation with the highest echelons of DOT last week in the Essential Air Service Office. And they said, Panair's not going anywhere until they're replaced, know that. Because we had a lot of difficulty with SkyWest. I mean, they were issuing these hold-in orders and nothing was getting done. And we said, well, where's the leverage? I mean, you know, you're sending these letters and they're not being backed up. But their counsel has said this time around, that's not going to happen again. They face punitive damages. Furthermore, Panair has told both the DOT and us that they intend on staying until they are essentially released. So we had a conversation with Panair earlier this week and we said, well, you're not selling tickets beyond November 1st, so what gives? And they said, our mistake, we're going to fix that. As of this morning, they were selling tickets well beyond November 1st on their website. I asked them to talk to Alaska so we could get it on that website and then the other mediums as well, e.g., Orbitz, Travelocity, et cetera. So we're going to, we're going to make sure they stay until a carrier is approved, unlike last time, you know.
And you're unable to respond to where you see a potential replacement to supplant Panair should they move from a Chapter 11 to, let's say, a Chapter 7? Which then all bets are off. I'm trying to clear up the uncertainty about the future air traveler coming into and out of Crescent City.
When we've been having these conversations with other carriers, one of the things that we make most salient is, how long is it going to take? Because we've really got to expedite this, knowing that Panair has announced their intentions, knowing that they filed for bankruptcy, et cetera. But we do want to make sure that they have enough infrastructure in place that when they start, they're not going to be all these, oh, my God, we forgot about that. So, you know, what we've been told is about 60 to 90 days. And what I've been saying in interviews is we're probably looking at realistically January, February of 2018. And just to reiterate, and I know I'm taking up a lot of time, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, the bids are due in September 12th. And then there'll be a 30-day public comment period subsequent to that. Carriers are going to come present before the board like they did last time and then staff will make a recommendation. The board will either approve or disapprove of that and they'll send it on to the DOT.
Thank you. Supervisor?
I just wanted to say thank you, Matthew and Susan. You guys have been doing a great job the last few weeks
Thank you.
making everything going. And I really appreciate all of you that you are doing right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, Matt, Susan, thank you so much for clarifying to the public and to this board what's going on. Appreciate your efforts. It would certainly be nice if the uncertain rumors were not perpetuated and we thank you for clearing a lot of that up. So thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any public comment on this agenda item? Great, seeing none. Again, appreciate you guys' time. Have a great day. All right, we're going to move on to our 10/20 timed agenda item. And I asked the folks who are here with us today to present to us because I was at an event not too long ago where I got a chance to see a summer youth showcase, which has been running in this community for a great deal of time, sponsored by our Building Healthy Communities program and the California Endowment. And the things that you see out of the youth in this community are ones that make you smile. So there was a lot of presentations that day, but I asked Michelle, and I think she's here with us today, to bring me a few candidates that we could line up before the board and our community, that I know the, the audience was filled to capacity. There's probably scanning room only there, but I think what's going on with the summer youth programs need to be shared by all. And if it could be broadcast like it's here today, it's great. So please join us and tell us a little bit about the summer youth program that was presented.
All right. I'm up first. Hi, Kristy Hernandez with the Del Norte Workforce Center. And we're here to tell you a little bit of what we did this summer with summer youth. We, we, let me see if I can work this. There we go. Okay. So E3, Experience, Education, and Employment, that's what we're calling our summer youth program. And what we did is we were targeting high school juniors and seniors, so incoming into this school year, with little to no work experience. So we wanted to give them an opportunity, kind of dip their toe into the world of work, basically. So it was a five-week program. First week was filled with work readiness workshops and activities. The four weeks after that were paid on the job work experience with a local employer. There was regular support provided by teachers, which we'll talk about. And not only did the youth earn money, but they also earned 10 elective CTE credits. We also wanted, whoa, that's loud.
Loud is good.
Mic control. All right. We also wanted to build community capacity around youth employment too by creating more mentors in the community, people who are willing to work with youth and give them that first job experience. And really change that narrative that youth aren't ready to work or aren't good workers. So we, we really, that was a big part of what we wanted to do as well.
Mr. Fabrikas.
Thanks for inviting us. One of the things that made this work was developing partnerships between the Del Norte Schools, Workforce Center, BHC, and local employers. And that, we knew we couldn't do anything unless we got that off the ground. We met weekly, once we got going. I don't think that's the slide yet, is it? How we started? Okay, so I'll get to that. All right. Sorry. Mr. Jeff Harris, our superintendent, approached me and said, hey, I'd like to start an apprenticeship slash internship program. And Tony, can you look into that and get one going? And, well, I don't have much background in that, so I, we researched online and lo and behold, believe it or not, next door in Humboldt County Office of Ed, they have an education-at-work program. And I called there and picked their brain. As it turned out, they had, on the infancy stage of their program as well, they had only launched their website a week before I called them and were quite annoyed with all of my phone calls. And I've been told little of me goes a long way, so. But a kernel of info that I got from there was the Workforce Center that they worked with, the partnership there. Immediately, I called our local Workforce Center Director, Ms. Kristy Hernandez, and I always kid her and say, she curses the day she answered the phone when I called. And to her credit, she has answered the phone ever since. And we've, since then, we, I've met with Jermaine Bluebaker from Building Healthy Communities, Michelle Creo, and we met every week to help build and plan this program. We developed the why, the mission and the vision, and then built with that in mind from A little about the mission, and I brought the mission and vision with me. Okay? The mission, to build the competence and confidence in our students with relevant career exploration opportunities and work-based experiences that inspire, guide, and empower by eroding the walls to employment and employability. To build partners in the community who share our mission of bridging the gaps between academics, job readiness, and industry skills, ultimately preparing our students for the world of work. That was our mission. And we, we hit a lot of our targets when we worked together. And a former supervisor, Ms. Martha McClure, always, I'm going to steal an analogy, she used to use of a three-legged stool when she worked at McCarthy. And this was truly a three-legged stool without the Workforce Center, without Building Healthy Communities, without the, the schools, and ultimately without local employers, this would never have worked. One of our biggest things we, we went off, brainstormed were barriers. Employment recruitment was our main barrier because there'd been apprenticeship programs in the past that hadn't got off the ground. And we know, or I know, this is my 24, 25th year in education in Del Norte, and our local businesses, our local entrepreneurs get approached all the time for donations for this, for that. And this was going to be no different. So I knew when I was walking through the door, that might have been their initial thought, and I didn't disappoint them for asking for more help with helping place one of our kids in their business. And we were able to bridge a lot of those barriers with the Workforce Center and it, this incredible partnership. Like I said, if I'm the ultimate, ultimate what-if guy, these are the ultimate, hey, why not, people? Because I can be this excitable guy, I want to go, 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 let's do it, let's do it, let's get done, all right? And they're like, hey, all right, let's see how we can do that. So I think I used up my time.
So just to give you an idea of what the five-week program looked like, the first week was work readiness boot camp. And so we utilized some community partners in doing that as well. We had workshops on soft skills because we hear a lot from employers that that's what is lacking, not only in our youth, but also in adults. So we thought we'd catch them young and teach them about that. We also had panels with employers and also young working youth that kind of just talked about their experience, what they might have done differently now looking back, now that they're a little older, and trying to let the youth know, kind of look out for this kind of stuff. Employers talking about what they look for in employees. Employers talking about what they look for in employees. We brought in some staff from Del Norte, from Department of Health and Human Services to help us with interview tips, workshop resumes, and they, each youth created a resume that week. We talked about budgeting, customer service, cash handling, counting back change, which is another big thing that we hear from employers as well. Stress reduction is always important. And then towards the end of that week, we did a round of speed interviewing. This was Jermaine's idea, kinda like speed dating. But we had a representative from each one of the work sites come in, meet with the youth, kinda do a quick interview, and at the end, they, the employer or the work site picked their top three youth, and the youth picked their top three work sites that they wanted to, to be placed at, and we tried to match them up as best we could. And that's what you see on the kinda top right is their, their placement slip. So on Friday, they each got handed a slip telling them where they're gonna be located and where they're gonna be working at, what to wear, when to show up on Monday, and this is a list of our local employers and organizations that worked with us during this, this program. It was, we tried to get a good mixture of office, hospitality, some hands-on outdoors type stuff. All right, and then Friday sessions.
So when we developed the program, like we said, as a five-week program, the first week was this employment boot camp. Next four weeks, they were in their placement, but the trick was Fridays was a classroom session that they, we recruited Ms. Robin Parker and Mr. Jeff Van Pelt as our teachers, another staff member, Jessica Phillips, helped us. So on Fridays, they met for two or three hours, and they had guest speakers, some of the guest speakers, well, Jeff Van Pelt, if you don't know Jeff, man, he's an entrepreneur, a go-getter, a risk taker, and that's the message we wanted to send, especially in Del Norte County, who, that is the county of risk-taking, right? Brandy Gonzalez and Mike Sullivan were also guest speakers. We toured some businesses on those Fridays. Fashion blacksmith, Ace Trust and Hardware Sites, Seaquake, and the Fire Department to give our kids multiple looks at different, whether it's public or private business. And then also, there was an element of conflict or issue resolution and reflection. What were some issues that cropped up at the job site the week before? How did you deal with it? How did you respond, how did you meet with your employer, your manager, your supervisor, and get through that?
All right, I get to talk about money. So how was this funded? So we provided a grant through the California Endowment that covered teachers' wages, the mileage for work site visits because, and transportation and support staff. We actually hired a district employee to help with youth transportation to job sites. We have placements in Hauchi and Requah. It's not always easy for youth to get to their job sites, and the bus systems don't go there very easily. So in order to help make it as seamless as possible for both employers and the youth, we bought on staff that would help drive them there. Also, the materials and supplies for workshops, food, food is very important for youth. If you feed them, they will come often, so we made sure to feed them well. They got a incentive for completing the boot camp, so they weren't guaranteed a placement site. We got lucky and had enough placement sites to match the youth, and it worked out. But that boot camp was, if they completed the boot camp, they got $100 incentive for doing that, and then the opportunity to be placed at a site. So, they all were placed, and they all got that stipend, as well as their wage, for the next four weeks. The payroll fees for the youth. So the youth were hired by the Workforce Center, not by the employees. The employer's contribu, contribution, hard word to say, was to the straight wage, but the, all the backend, like, workman's comp and all the things that it takes to hire people was done by the Workforce Center. So the employer only had to, they didn't have to figure out how to hire a short-term employee, they didn't have to figure out how that worked with their HR and how that worked with their taxes. The Workforce Center was able to cover that. And the $840 contribution, because it goes through the Workforce Center, which is, has a nonprofit associated with it, it was actually tax deductible for the employers. Supportive services, like if the kids needed special work attire, if they needed, you know, things to get them started on the job, we were able to provide that through the grant money. And any admin costs for the Workforce Center, this was a big lift for the Workforce Center to take this on, so we wanted to make sure that they were able to do that with our staffing as well.
So outcomes. We had 17 youths begin the program in July, and one decided at the, he finished the, the boot camp, but decided, eh, I don't really wanna work. So he decided not to do the four weeks afterwards. So 16 started that, and all 16 completed, no issues. Anytime that I ran into one of the work site, either managers, owners out in the community, nothing but great things to say about our youth that were placed there, which was awesome to hear, because you're, eh, you're never too sure, and when you do a placement, adult or youth, how it's gonna turn out. So, everybody was happy, and even though it wasn't expected, five youths were hired at the end of this program by the, by where they were placed, which was pretty cool, because a lot of those youths have been looking for work and not finding it. So, that was great. We just wanted to, oh, I forgot about that one. What's next?
What's next? I began this with saying, Mr. Harris, our superintendent, approached me with this apprenticeship/ internship idea, and unfortunately, I fell dramatically short of that goal, because this is not that, but it will be that. That is the vision. If we were in Santa Clara County, we'd be talking about Apple, or HP, or Cisco, or these big corporate entities and larger agencies. We're Del Norte County. When we talk about a Jeff Van Pelt, or, you know, I'm reading a newspaper, how timely was today's newspaper? There was a lot of sections on employment and unemployment, and some of our local businesses starting up. The rugged individualism, if you will, of Del Norte County, and the people, the entrepreneurs, the risk takers, the innovators that do things here, that provide employment. That's our vision, is to get to those employers and hopefully place future apprentices, interns in those programs. Now, we're pretty heavy in Del Norte County on public entities like the prison, the school district, Redwood State National Parks. I don't know how it'd look to place someone at the prison, a lot of liability there, I'm guessing, Mr. Serena, but, so, but Alexander Derry, that, you know, there's a lot of places we can look, and a lot of entrepreneurs, you know? Like I said, I've had a lot of partnerships with many of them, and we, I've really appreciated those, and that's who we're gonna be looking to in the future for our placement, for apprentice and internships. Did I hit everything? I think. All right.
All right, and since one of our youth weren't able to make it to come talk, we have just a short snippet of her presentation at the youth showcase that we wanted to share with you, and it just talks about her experience with E3. Oopsies. Oh. Did it knock out? You can hear her.
My name is Alvin. I am the senior first class freshman, and I am the third class freshman. I have information for the program through the program. I was recruited by 2014, and at the time, I was in my junior year. Equally, it's a hard challenge to apply the opportunity of experience, education, and employment. So because it was an opportunity to grow up by just a little bit, I believe, for me, it is a four or five week program, and within those weeks, you can do post-game instruction on your skill, and then there is a local business loan home to get on to train and experience. So me, I got picked up, basically, from the community, so I was able to do some of that work. Sometimes I'd be ordering papers, and the work was sort of difficult, and it was more upcoming than, you know. For me, the biggest challenge was probably organizing technically, because I'm not a law or technology. It is something I can't understand, but I'm sure it's my own, it's my own experience. So now, regardless of my own, and I just really want everyone to know that E3 is a launch spirit, and perhaps it's a great way to start a career. I believe that there is something around the issue of mentally, the support, and the whole thing. The youth are able to acquire standards, and all the things of them, and their future. Friendships and connections are created, and it really builds themselves to develop a individual community.
All right, we didn't have the video, but that was the clip. All right, so any, any questions?
Questions from the board? So, I'll make a comment. This community, for a long time, has talked about these type of programs. More importantly, getting our youth involved early, especially within the schools, because there's apparent conversation taking place between the school and the businesses that our kids just aren't ready to work. Matter of fact, once they get there, they fail. But I think what has rolled out with programs like this, the summer youth programs, more importantly, the program E3 that you presented, is what we need in this community to have our youth prepared, and more importantly, received well by our businesses. The more of that we have, the better off we are. And it's our community coming together to respond to a need that our business community has said time and time again, "Help, help." So I have to, I have to say in conclusion, thank you for coming here today and presenting a very important part and missing puzzle to a community need piece, and you guys are doing an excellent job, and we wish you the best of luck continuing on this mission. Thank you very much. I would open it up for public comment, in case anybody wants to make a public comment on this presentation. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead, thank you again for coming in. Ms. Wiki? Thank you for helping to support this program. We have a 10-30 timed agenda item, which is a previous road improvement deferment for 1135 Harold Street in Crescent City, APN number 117-101-003. Good morning.
Hello.
How are you?
Pretty good. How are you?
Doing excellent.
Good. So, we have a request for a deferred improvement agreement from our daily bread. Earlier this year, they applied for a use permit to be a rescue mission, and as a condition of the use permit, road improvements were required, because that's typically associated with a use permit. They did want to request a deferment, because constructing the improvements this year in order to gain occupancy as a rescue mission would not have allowed them to be open for the rainy season. And so, they requested the deferred improvement agreement, which was for curb, gutter, sidewalk, and paving the half width of the road, but, sorry. And so staff supported that before we reached the planning commission, then we let the planning commission know where we thought this was headed, which was here for this action. The planning commission did not make a formal recommendation, but they also did not comment on staff's recommendations, so we are assuming that it's inferred, that they support this deferred improvement agreement. And basically, it's about getting people into the rescue mission this winter, and then allowing them, as they have time and resources, to construct the road improvements that are required.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from the board? Supervisor Gitlin?
Thank you, Rosanna. We spoke on this yesterday. It's a 10-year period of deferment. Give us a little history on why it's 10, rather than a lesser period to put in sidewalks. Give us a little background, please.
So, the county has a standard deferred improvement agreement that anyone can request to enter into, and our standard language is 10 years. In the county's code, there are provisions that, you know, of course, the board can make a contingent on anything, and some included in the code is subordinate to a first mortgage or property improvements. I went with the 10 years. We all know how hard it is to secure funding, and that it takes time, and so I felt that the 10 years or a standard agreement was appropriate. And then I also, after speaking with you yesterday, I looked up the two previous agreements, one for the Keckery property and one for the Benner property, which are in the immediate vicinity. And back in 2004, the Benner property received a deferred improvement agreement, and that one was for 20 years. I have no idea where 20 years came from, but that's what it was. So that would come due in 2024, and Keckery's was 2012, so that would be 2022. Historically, so they're 10 years, but at the end of 10 years, if they're still not constructed, the, the property owner is still responsible, and also the board has the ability prior to 10 years to call the improvements due. So it's, it's pretty open if we needed to get something done immediately.
So my question is, with regard to the contiguous properties, the Benner and the Keckery properties, one is coming due in 2022, and the other one is 2024. At some point, sidewalks will have to be put in, and can we not make this contingent, this agreement contingent on having the entire street there done at the same time? 2022, 2024, and whatever period of time the others are compelled to eventually put in the sidewalks? Otherwise, I see eventually, this, this just will never get completed. There'll just be one extension after another, and the sidewalks will never be completed.
We can put any term we want into the agreement. However, the 10-year period is good faith on the part of the property owner. If they don't construct it within 10 years, I think it needs a board of action to actually tell them they are gonna construct it.
So that takes it to 2027, the 10-year deferment?
Yes, it would.
So we've got contiguous properties between 2022, 2024, and 2027. I'm just hoping we could tie these all together and get the sidewalks in, because ultimately, that's what we want, is to have these sidewalks completed.
And you can do that. The, the, how the agreements are written would allow the board, assuming, say, we signed an agreement today, we could actually, next year, the board could request that they put the sidewalk in, and even though they have up to 10 years to put it in, they would need to put it in within 90 days. That's how the agreement's written.
Thank you. Questions? Supervisor Berkowitz?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I wanna commend you for making an exception to the rules where it serves the greater good. And really, this helps people in need, and I think that's important.
Okay. Thank you, Rosanna. Let's open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the deferment for 1135 Harold.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion and a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. 10-40 timed item, adopt findings and approve a modified road improvement standard with conditions for 364 North Pebble Beach Drive, APN 120-310-003. Rosanna?
Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself. I don't believe there's a conflict, but there may be a perception of one.
Understood.
Okay, so we have a request for a modified road improvement standard. What's happened is at 364 North Pebble Beach Drive, the existing structure has been demoed, not the result of fire or any hazards, but just because they wanted to build a new structure. And so that triggered the road improvement standard. Presently, along the south property line, there's a 30-foot easement for road and utility purposes, and along the north property line, there's a 10-foot easement for sewer, and I'm not sure what other types of utilities. Which means that the width of the property for construction of a home is 103, so 160 feet wide. The county's road improvement standards, because it's in the urban area, would be a 60-foot-wide public right-of-way with 50 feet of road improvements. And so that would reduce the lot size that could be developed down significantly, and of course, you still have setbacks to contend with. So staff recommended, is recommending that the road easement stay at 30 feet. So staff recommended, uh, is recommending that the road easement stay at 30 feet, and that the private rural road standards, the, for 1 to 3 structures, uh, be imposed, and that would be 20 feet of gravelled surface and 2 feet of shoulders. Also, there should be a turnaround at the end of the road, per our road standards, but if we did that, again, we would have significant problems, and there appears to be sufficient room at the entrance to Pebble Beach Drive to turn around. So, we can't actually say that the turnaround is 100% approved today if we do move forward with this, because we need buy-in from Cal Fire, but that is anticipated.
Thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, Rosanna, uh, if I could. I'm trying to figure this out. The pictures were not very good, I gotta say. At best, they were not very good. But, uh, there, am I looking at this map correctly in parcel 1? Does that, does the right-of-way go through the corner of that house?
Yes, and that's not the parcel we're talking about.
No, I understand that part. But, so where is the access to that?
That's a basis of bearing line, that's not a right-of-way line.
Okay, that's, okay, so that kinda confused me, because it appears to be right in that same area. So, the access to parcel 1, I know that's not part of our discussion.
Yes.
But the access to parcel 1 is, is that somewhere in there? I'm not, I'm not quite seeing where that.
So parcel 1 is accessing directly from Pebble Beach Drive, and there is an actual easement to parcel 2 and 3 over parcel 1, and that's the dotted line shown. Do you want me to point to it, or?
Yeah, I, I think I've got, I mean, it's kind of a diagonal goes across it, then, then the other. Uh, that's what I was curious about, is how, how that, so that's, then that's just the drive, they have a driveway, I'm assuming that's a garage out to the side?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I'm sure that was probably in the picture, I just couldn't see that. I was just trying to get an idea. Now, um, I, I'm guessing that there's room for turnaround at, at the end, on parcel 2 now I'm talking about?
There isn't, because the required setbacks, and because if we called it a turnaround, they wouldn't be able to park in the turnaround.
And then, and then I guess at some point, if parcel 3 is ever developed?
It is developed.
Oh, it is developed?
Yes.
And, okay, I don't, I just don't see a, a house on there or anything, so.
Yeah, this is a map from 1980 or so, I think. Yeah, from 1982.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rosanna. Public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Further discussion from staff, or from the board?
I make the motion to approve a modified road improvement standard with, uh, conditions for 364 North Pebble Beach Drive, APN identified as 120310-003, as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Please ask Supervisor Callen to return, please. All right, we're gonna go ahead and let the room clear for a second. You're welcome. All right, we're gonna go ahead with item number 22, which is a discussion regarding Delnarque County transient occupancy tax. Um, just to tee this discussion up a little, there's been a great deal of discussion around transient occupancy tax within Delnarque County, both the city and the county, and what we collect over the past several months, with the idea on, um, how it should be spent. And, um, I thought it'd be, I thought at best that we allow the facts to present themselves before discussion was weighed in on, and the best person to do that is the, the person collecting those taxes that can give us a facts-based history on TOT, and more importantly, what's been collected. So, I've asked our treasurer, tax collector here today. Ms. Lopez, good to see ya.
Good to see you too. I'm on, I have another hat today, taxes, not investments, but just as important. So, my, um, presentation is gonna bring some information from 2004, '05 fiscal year through current, um, as of June 30th of this fiscal year. Okay. So, as you can see in this graph, the revenue from 2004, '05 through this fiscal year has greatly increased. Um, 2004, '05 fiscal year brought in about 229,000 in TOT revenue. Um, now we're looking at about 455,000 in revenue. It did decrease a little bit this year, um, which we can talk about later, but it's definitely increasing at a rate I wasn't expecting to be as high as it was in this short period of time, but, um, I think it's great. Klamath, I put a little notation as, um, I was asked to make note of what the actual revenue for Klamath is, and I noted that there on the side. About 76,000 for '14, '15, around 80,000 for '15, '16, and a little bit less this fiscal year, or last fiscal year, excuse me, for, um, a $72,000 revenue source. This pie chart, um, will show you what the types of short-term lodging we have in the county. Um, as you can see, a majority is all the vacation rentals, those single-family homes that are, um, vacation rentals. We have hotels, not very many in the county, and most of them are in the city limits. Um, a couple B&amp;Bs, but bed and breakfasts, and then we have RV and cabin rentals. So, we don't have 17 RV cabin rentals, we have 17 owners that are renting, um, either RV recreational vehicles, or the little cabins that are like park-style cabins. White Rock, I think, um, RV, Redwood RV Resort has a handful, and then some of the RV parks kinda scattered throughout the county are actually renting out RVs. So, um, maybe like 60 actual heads would, you know what I mean, like, um, actual, I, actual RVs or actual cabins, but 17-owner type properties, that's what that reference is. So we have about 104 active accounts right now, um, that are registered with us, and we're always looking for the new ones to come in. So this one just shows the revenue by the quarter, and obviously, July and through September are our really busy seasons, and then the springtime, April and June, are right below that, and then winter is always our lower season. And it, it's still comparing, you can still see that, you know, the revenue is increasing, it's, it's always going up. There's, obviously, depending what quarter we're in, we'll have lesser amounts, but it's, it is increasing. And this one, um, just is gonna show you, based on the quarter, how many actual payments or how many operators remitted money. Um, because we have 104 active registered owners, not everyone actually rented out during that quarter, but it just really goes to show you that, you know, back in 2004, we only had about 25 active registered owners. Now we're, um, over 100, only about 86 or so actually had rents for this, this last quarter, but it's, um, it, this, this chart really does show how many, how much of an increase we've had in actual new, new owners over the years. And then I thought it would be interesting to just include what we have for some of the local comparable areas, as far as what the TOT rates are. Humboldt County being our closest, um, Humboldt itself is 10%, Arcata, Eureka, they're separate, and they're 10, but Ferndale and Rio Deller at 8%. Fortuna's higher at 12, Trinidad's at 12. Um, Mendocino County, 10, Fort Bragg, Ukiah, 10%, Willets is a little bit lower at 9. Modoc, super low at 4%, but Alteras, which is their city seat there, is at 10%. Trinity, again, pretty low at 5, and then Plumas and Portola are about 9. So, I mean, we're sort of right in there, comparables.
I saw the full list.
Uh-huh.
And I found it very interesting, because I just checked hotels that I recently personally stayed in. So Sacramento, Santa Barbara, Tahoe, well, Vegas is Nevada, so it's different, and then Anaheim.
Uh-huh.
And the, the taxes that showed on my receipts were higher than what you had listed on the list. So, I mean, like, by 2 to 3%. So I didn't know if this was an older one?
Well, it could be that that particular hotel has a special assessment.
Oh, no, they had those as well.
Oh, wow.
I'm talking just your tax, and then like Vegas, I know that's Nevada, they had another fee on top.
Okay.
And they call it resort fees.
Oh, gosh, okay.
So I was just looking at the taxes, not the resort fees.
Okay.
And they were, they were off by anywhere from 2 to 4%.
The, um, this information was put together in February of 2017, and we, you know, we didn't actually call every county. We went online and took what they had off their website, so I could definitely, if you wanna, I'd like to know. Yeah, definitely, I just assumed it was probably the special assessments that they might have added to that, but if it was just countywide or county tax for that area... Yeah. 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 Right, and it always seems really high, and, other than Delnarque County sometimes. Sure. Um, so this, this spreadsheet and the other, I think I have one other one, is, we just listed every county in California, um, and then we also wanted to show what we could find were some additional assessments, um, tourist, uh, tourism, business improvement district assessments, special assessments, maybe fees, that are added on top of the, the TOT rate. Um, I don't, I'm not gonna read all of them, but you can kinda see where everyone's at, and then the, the later half of the, the counties. So, just some notes on this tourism assessment. Humboldt County charges a 2% assessment for actual RV and campground spaces, which is, as some counties do charge, um, their local campgrounds, they can charge a TOT for that space, which is interesting. Um, Mendocino has a 1% business improvement district fee. Looks like Santa Barbara's a little bit different. They're, they're in a tiered system, and it's based on whatever the average daily rate is for the, the hotel. And then, it's only for hotels and motels, not for vacation rentals. Their San Luis Obispo charges a 2% improvement district assessment just for certain areas of town, the coastal areas, and then the entire county has a tourism marketing district fee. So everyone's a little bit different, you know, geared towards maybe what their, their needs are for that county. Um, there's also a fee-based tiered system in Santa Cruz County, which is an interesting concept. And these maps, it's a little hard to tell, but where the stars are, I don't know how important this is for you to know, but we were just trying to gather as much info as we could for you, um, is the different TOT or registered accounts that we have, and this is the entire county, and then I broke it up into different areas of the county. Pebble Beach is our biggest area of TOT, or, excuse me, um, vacation rentals in the area all along the coast there, or Pebble Beach Drive. And then Hayuchinigandaski, we have a lot for all the, the Smith River fishing enthusiasts. And then Smith River, then, um, up through the, the border there, you can see that there's a handful there. And then I also included Klamath, just because that's of interest now. And then, just a little background on what we do, um, we really work hard. I mean, I was in the Airbnb website yesterday for a couple hours, found a couple new people that I made some phone calls to. Um, we're really actively searching, trying to make sure everyone's in compliance, um, and just educating them. The one I called yesterday, she was completely clueless about what TOT was, she thought she had to pay it, was it tax deductible, and we've sent her letters, so a little challenging trying to get that person registered, but in any event, just trying to keep everybody really informed, and then for us, just make sure everyone is doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, we monitor the paper for fictitious business name statements, little typo there on my, my wording, pardon, um, and then advertisements. We've seen people advertise their businesses, yet we're not, they're not registered with us, so that helps too. And then, um, we have, most people just do come in, you know, they know, they come in and register with us, they're very honorable. Um, so as, uh, August review, VRBO, we found about 61 rentals with our county. Um, Airbnb, there was 55, which is VRBO too. A lot of times, the same people will register at both places. And then HomeAway is sort of linked in with VRBO as well. And then TOT in review. Currently, with our 11 hotels, I did some quick stats, and their revenue is pretty, it's, it's increasing, but it's not substantial. The main revenue that we're seeing is from, or increases from the vacation rentals, um, the hotels and the motels here, they're just pretty steady, consistent. Um, we had 47 accounts in 2007 versus 104 accounts for this fiscal year. The revenue for '16, '17 did decrease, and we saw, and I, I did some spot checking, and revenues were down, and I'm not really sure why, maybe our weather for this, you know, we had a really bad winter. I do know that July, August, and September's revenues came in a lot higher, so I think our summer rental season is really good right now. Um, hopefully, that'll just stay true for the end of, through fall. Um, and then, a note of, um, loss in revenue is the Shipah Shore sale. So I didn't realize how much we were gonna be losing, but 16,000 is a pretty good chunk of money. So, I think that's, it, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Barbara.
Sure.
Questions? Ms. Lopez. Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Barbara. It's, uh, what caught my attention was, uh, the loss of funding from Shipah Shore.
Do you look at, work with the assessor in finding out what properties have the $7,000 tax exempt status on their properties? Uh, in other words, are you, all homeowners, owner occupied or entitled to a 7,000? Is that an avenue that you look at, uh, to see if there are those who do not have that exemption, and perhaps those are rentals that are not being realized? And I don't know if they're vacation rentals, that would be something you would have to look into. A standard rental is not gonna be subject to TOT, but we don't know how many of those properties, in fact, are in, could be, uh, vacation rentals. Is that a possibility, look into that?
I don't see a huge comparison between the individuals that are getting that exemption, because a lot of those people could have the exemption with a different home, in a different county in California, you're only allowed one exemption. So, if I was to look at the entire tax roll, and, I'm not sure if that's your asking, the entire tax roll, see who doesn't have an exemption, and assume maybe they might be a vacation rental, to, to try to compare those?
Well, I, I mean, we're looking at loss here with the Shipah Shore. I'm, I'm trying to, uh, trying to find ways to generate more income. I know we have 104 properties that are currently, uh, being used. I, I wanna see how we can increase that number, and, uh, I'm looking at any and all avenues in which to seek out that information, so that we can make up, not only make up for this loss, but continue the growth of TOT, uh, for the county, which is 455,000 at this point.
I, I guess I don't really see the comparison between the homeowner's exemption revenue versus TOT. I apologize, I'm not sure where...
Okay.
I could make any...
Well, someone who's not living in their home. Okay, then what is their home used for? If they're not living in their home where they can claim a homeowner's exemption?
Right, not, some people don't claim a homeowner's exemption in Delnarque County if they own a home in another county of California.
I understand.
But, some people don't even realize that there is a homeowner's exemption allowance, and if we see that it is our primary residence, ask them at the counter, we'll send them over to the assessor's office, but, um, if anything, people unfortunately might have a homeowner's exemption that shouldn't have one if they moved away, and they have to, you know, I'm, I apologize.
I'm just exploring opportunities for us to keep the TOT as high a level as possible, and increasing the number from 104 to a higher number. I'm sure they're there, we just haven't found them yet. I'm looking for avenues to do that. I'm not sure this property exemption would be one of those avenues, but...
I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think we just need to make sure that we... I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think we just need to make sure that we keep everybody really informed about what their responsibility is as operators and just make sure that we're doing our job in identifying those new individuals. Or if anyone hasn't registered with us, I feel like we're, you know, we spend a lot of time on motel tax and with the short staff that we have, we really do work hard on it. So, I, I'm really positive that we are finding as many people as we can and we're not missing too many people, I would hope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay.
Um, let me stage, because I'm sure we'll have some public comment on this. As, as we've progressed forward over the last decade, there was movements within Delnart County to capture TOT revenue specifically for the reinvestment per se in tourism marketing. Those efforts took place in two thousand six and those funds were captured from various public and private entities at the time to build what I would call a war chest to market this community finally. Till that time, um, TOT revenues previous to two thousand five had pretty much stayed flat and stagnant. And many of us in the tourism community or active in chambers of commerce has called it a redwood curtain that existed between us and Humboldt County. While our adjacent county and communities saw growth, Delnart County remained stagnant. But efforts from private groups, private citizens, chamber commercees and the local agencies all coming together created the war chest that was now used for public investment and private marketing. Um, clearly, based on the data that was presented here today by Ms. Lopez, there's been significant growth in TOT revenues in Delnart County over the last decade. Even through tough economic times, very tough economic times for this community, TOT revenues continued to grow. Properties have been added, short-term rentals, single-family homes, new motels, hotels, capturing this important dollar that continues to flow into our general fund. The question then comes to the county is, how do we better appropriate general fund resources if this tends to be the only general fund resource that continues to have some significant rate of growth annually, when we know we have services that we need to continue to provide for? And as presented by CAO Serena at our last board meeting, the board for a long time has had priorities on how best to use general fund resources because there's a lot of hands out on how best to use those. Most importantly, public safety. We have a great deal and need for public safety in our community and law enforcement and the hands always out and always there and always asking for more. We understand that need. So, it's a, it's a fine balancing act. And the discussion that was brought forward here today, a lot of it is due because the Harbor Commission has now approached us to look at TOT funds and helping to support ventures within the harbor. The Klamath Chamber of Commerce, I know we have representatives here today who are probably going to speak with us, have also approached us for TOT. Chamber of Commerce continues to come back to us annually for their allocation of TOT that goes into the tourism marketing of this community. So, teeing that conversation up, I want folks to understand that the balancing act that this Board of Supervisors does with the budget annually, based on what limited general fund revenue we have to work with, we try to, we try to spread that out as best we can. Um, hopefully going forward, recognizing significant gains in certain areas like TOT, we can make hopefully more well-informed decisions on how we could get potentially with an additional investment, a better return on investment. So, I'd like to open it up for public comment at this time. For folks, if they would like to weigh in on how we're taking in TOT revenue, their observations and how they'd like to see that spent, please feel free to speak to the board about that, that opportunity. While Mr. Horner's making his way up here. And then please don't be shy if you would like to weigh in today. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Kylan Horner. Um, I live in District Five. I'm also the Klamath Chamber of Commerce President. Um, Klamath is only four percent of Delnart's population. And as you saw from the slide, we are producing almost twenty percent of the county's TOT. We are definitely doing our part. And with your help, I believe we can do even more. Um, I'd like to see a marketing campaign aimed at bringing more people to Klamath to stay and to stay longer. Uh, to fund this campaign, I'm here to ask that the board give us, give Klamath some of its TOT that we generate back. Tourism is the last industry that Klamath has left right now. And in order to grow, we do need investment. Please make this investment a priority to Klamath. And, uh, I would also like to point out, we are currently seeing a greater unity in the Klamath Chamber than we have in a long time. Some of the top TOT payers in Klamath, the Motel Trees, Woodland Villa, Requa Inn, Steel Head Lodge are all united behind this plan for a marketing campaign, as well as many other businesses in the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, and in closing, please help us make Klamath great again.
Thank you. Does the Klamath Chamber receive TOT dollars or any form of subsidy from the county at this point?
Yes. Currently, we receive two thousand five hundred dollars, which is a very, very small fraction of what we produce.
Thank you.
Chamber members, do you guys have down there?
Uh, we have roughly about seventy-five members and about twenty-five of those are businesses.
So, a hundred dollars apiece.
Oh, seventy-five dollars apiece.
She's taken up to seventy-five.
Very good.
Wow, we're cheaper down there.
We are.
Yeah.
Welcome.
I have a letter written by one of our.
Please introduce yourself. Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
I'm Jan Crandall, the Treasurer of the Klamath Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, Jan.
Since ninety-seven. I have a letter here from one of our chamber members I'd like to read to you. Dear Delnart County, some years ago, my husband and I opened a thrift store in the Klamath, uh, but had to close a few years later due to lack of customers. We understand the hardships the other businesses are having. First, with the gas prices and now with the lack of fish. Our area is not only, or used to be, a great fishing destination, but also a retreat for people from all over the world to come at, for some much-needed peace and tranquility. Our businesses have been working on improvements to entice tourists to stay and play here in Klamath, but we need more. We are asking to receive more of the top money that we have sent to you to help us in advertising and bringing life back to Klamath. Tourism is our only way of surviving. The fishing guides, the hotels, motels, our shops and restaurants cannot survive without tourists. Please return some of our top, uh, that we have paid into. Sincerely, the letter was written by Linda Whitavitt, Klamath Berry Festival Organizer, Jeff Whitavitt, Whitavitt Willows, Robert McCray, owner of the Klamath Tackle Shop, George Padaci, owner of the Klamath Campacorral, Leanna and Jerry Bergenhagen, owners of the Country Club Bar and Grill, Steve Peach, owner of Shiniff RV Park, Gary and Diana Bedell, owners of Klamath River RV Park, Tom and Carolyn Atlas, owners of Mystic Forest RV Park, and Patty Bearden, owner of the Turwir Park. This is a heartfelt letter. We have looked at this, submitted letters for years. I cannot believe that you can only come up with twenty-five hundred dollars continuously. Please consider us.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Is it still morning?
It sure is.
Where's the coffee here? Jeez, guys. Uh, I'm Hannah Horner. I live in Klamath, California. I don't have a baby today, so I can actually focus and so can everyone else. Uh, first of all, I have a letter from my father, John Thompson. Um, I think everybody knows, but I'll just say it. I am fourth generation Trees of Mystery. It's been in my family for seventy years. Uh, before I read his letter, what Kylan is saying, the unity that is happening in Klamath is so exciting. And my husband and I are direct result of that. We are only here because Klamath is able to be unified. We left our lives in Portland, Oregon, excellent jobs, to come back home. This is home. Klamath is home. Delnart County is home. And I understand your balancing act and I do not want to be in your shoes making that balancing act happen. However, this is important also. Okay. From my father, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, I'm sorry I cannot be with you on this day, August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Those of you who know me know I am very much a geek and am attending a once-in-a-lifetime total solar eclipse in central Oregon. I am so jealous. The Klamath Chamber of Commerce is requesting your consideration, which I strongly support, of the return to Klam, the return to Klamath, much of the TOT dollars collected there, for the purpose of a strong and professional marketing program in an effort to rebuild the community and create opportunity for success as a tourism destination. Last year, some seventy-four thousand dollars from Klamath was collected and the county has had, has for some time returned two thousand five hundred each year. The Crescent Delnart County Chamber receives sixty-five thousand dollars a year. This is not unreasonable that Klamath, through the Chamber of Commerce, received the same amount for the following reasons. The economic of, uh, the economy of Klamath community has been devastated by the regulation of its traditional resource-based industries of logging and fishing. The state of California and the county have allowed an unlevel playing field, allowing the casinos, hotels not, to not be subjected to the requirement of paying the TOT as well as other taxes that provide, that private lodgings must pay. The return of the TOT dollars would help through the marketing efforts to offset this inequity. Thirdly, every expert and consultant since the advent of Option Nine has told us that tourism is the main economic opportunity that should be pursued and is a no-brainer. These requested funds would give Klamath that opportunity. If successful, the county would receive even more dollars in, in time than it has invested. According to Dean Ryan Associates, the Tourism Statistics Fund for California Office of Tourism, the county received a windfall increase in TOT in, in, of some ninety thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen and another increase of forty-five thousand dollars in two thousand sixteen to total TOT of four hundred seventy thousand three hundred dollars. It is time for that to be shared with the communities that made this possible. Thank you for your consideration of this critical request. Sincerely, John Thompson, CEO Trees of Mystery. Thank you. Do I get my own public comment? Did I already do it? Do I have to leave and come back?
If, if you feel obligated, please.
Okay. I did. So, that was John Thompson. Um, I did just want to point out a couple things that are coming about. You're asking how to make more money. And I think that's a very good question. And I just want to say out loud that I hope that the answer is not to raise the taxes. I think that needs to be said. Um, this is an investment. This is a long-term investment and Klamath is committed to bringing back returns to benefit the entire county. If we grow, everybody grows. We, Klamath is the most beautiful spot on the planet. I mean, just come down, stand on top of Requa and look at the mouth of that river. Timber is gone, fishing is gone. This is all we have left. We have to do this. We need your help. Nobody wants to yell about it. Nobody wants to cause the sheriff to not have enough money. We want the sheriff in Klamath. But this is so important and it will bring you more money if we just invest in Klamath and our tourism and all of the businesses there that are working so hard to hold on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, it's still morning. My name is Sally Rogers. Um, my husband and I are the pastors in Klamath. Uh, we planted a church there five and a half years ago. We have about seventy-five people who attend on a regular basis. Uh, I grew up in Klamath, born and raised in Klamath. My parent, my family has been there since the fifties. My father owned a business there until he passed about ten years ago. My mother was, uh, worked at Market Keating for twenty-five years. I left in, um, at eighteen swearing. I was never coming back to Delnart County and seven years ago returned. And I am thankful and I am happy that we are here. I, I saw Klamath at the best when Simpson was there and we had all this stuff and we had a market and we had so many businesses in Klamath. And then we have seen, after I returned, I saw the Klamath that I knew isn't the Klamath that is there anymore. But the people are and the heart is. And there are people there who continue to want to see, uh, Klamath flourish. We have seen just this year, now we are a church, so we are not affected by, um, tourists not coming through as far as money, but we do see that the people that used to come in the last five and a half years and stay in the RV parks, they're not coming back. We have seen that we have a drop in, um, visitors coming to our church who'd usually come through and they're just not anymore. And it's because the fishing is gone and honestly, we all know it's because of the road. And I know that that is something that is being worked on. But Klamath has become stagnant. And I don't want to say that it is dying because I don't believe that is true, but I know that it needs a boost. And I do know too, as Hannah said, that you have a huge balancing act that I too would not want to do for, be in your shoes to do. But I know that something needs to help Klamath along. There has to be some kind of investment to draw not just, not just tourists in, but we need to start bringing people in who want to start businesses in Klamath because they see it as a destination. Right now, Klamath is a place that you drive through. It isn't a place that you stay. And I think that some investment would help us to be able to make it a place that people want to come and stay. People want to come and start a business in Klamath and they want to bring their families and they want their kids to go to school there. And so, I, I just, um, I ask you to please take that into consideration, that instead of being stagnant, that we are able to use our money to help grow Klamath once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, excuse me, Jan Warman from the Requa Inn. And I am a, um, uh, been here for more than four generations or seven generations. We have lived on Requa Hill, my family, since time began. So, um, a longtime Requa and Klamath, uh, family. Uh, one of the things I want to talk about really quickly for you all, and I know you've heard some, some great compelling things, is, um, it was a fish kill in, in Klamath. We are down, we've got the, um, excuse me, the York Tribe's General Counsel said they have put in for a twenty-five million dollar, um, loss in Klamath. And that's the people that fish, the people who buy the things, that do the fishing, that buy, stay at the hotels and stay at the restaurants, all of those things. So, it's a major economic disaster that's happening right now in Klamath. And I think when you look at your numbers and you see them continuing to grow, it's like, well, everything is great. It's not. Klamath is really in economic, um, perils right now. We also have Congressman Huffman who asked for, who asked and received twenty million dollars for fishing relief. He, his office said they know that's not enough. That also affects Crescent City as well. So, when we're looking about the economic collapse of, or crisis, I should say, in Klamath, there is again, what initiative that Huffman is bringing to the board is recreation. And that is what we are, the collaboration that we're working together for the betterment of Klamath is all about how do we bring that tourism here? I do want to invite all of you, on October eleventh, we're having a joint, um, Delnart County Crescent City Chamber mixer. And it's going to be a four-hour mixer down in Klamath where you will be able to ride on the gondola, stop by the Requa Inn and have a glass of wine, um, ride the jet boat down to the mouth, run out to the Steelhead and, um, have a, one of their famous margaritas or daiquiris, go through the drive-through tree and just to see all that Klamath has to offer. There's a lot of people who still in Crescent City feel like they're afraid to go to Klamath. It's an amazing, incredible place. It's an amazing, incredible place with, as you've met today, some amazing, incredible people who are doing, working their hardest to make that an amazing, beautiful place to come and to stay. So we invite all of you down there to come with us. We are a Yorke Ran business on the Yorke Reservation, and so we do have the capacity to pull our TOT tax and to put that over with the tribe. We don't want to do that. We believe in Delano County. We are members of the Delano County Chamber. We're members of Delano County. And so we want to work collectively together to make Klamath the best that it can be and to make Delano County the best that it can be. So give us a little bit of seed money, and we can turn this into an amazing place, and you will see your money returned tenfold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment. Good morning, Mr. Palmer.
Good morning. Jeff Palmer, Crescent City, Delano County, Executive Director of the Chamber and Visitors' Bureau. And well said, Jan. I, for one, do support an increase of the TOT from 8% to 10% to stay in line with the city. I also know that there has been talk about a T-bid, and we, for one, are really excited about the enthusiasm in Klamath. Hannah and Kylan did reach out to me. I was supposed to meet with them. Unfortunately, I didn't make it, but I did go to their Chamber Mixer a couple months ago at Forest Cafe. And we are hosting a Visit California trip with bloggers through Adventure Travel. They're staying at the Requa Inn, and we really would love to cooperate and work more with the Klamath Chamber and maybe look at a T-bid that could be incorporated, or working with them in a cooperative effort to promote Delano County. Not that we don't do that. Right now, 65% of our visitors are coming from the north, probably be affected a little bit with the fires, but we always encourage them to go to Trees of Mystery, Tour Through Tree, Klamath Overlook, Requa Inn, and all the things that there are to do down in Klamath. And it is a gem, and it certainly would be a shame for us not to work together. And I know Chair Howard, you've always told us we should come back and ask for more money, and, you know, our funding has been the same, I think, for about the last 10 years, but any additional money that could be provided, whether it's to the Klamath Chamber, obviously not taking away from the Crescent City Chamber, but, but, but any, any money, any additional money that could be contributed that we then could work together cooperatively with Klamath to increase the tourism in Delano County, I think, would definitely show improvements. Right now, our visitation through July 30th from January 1 is up 10% over last year. Now, we were down January, February, most of March because of the weather, road slides, things like that, but July was tremendous and August has been really good as well. And I really do think with the people involved that they will make smart decisions with the marketing dollars and can really leverage the money to really promote Delano County.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Public comment.
Okay, so then we're going to bring this back to the board. This is a discussion item only, and it's timely in the sense that the board has basically passed a budget that we will finalize here in the next month or two. And today, on our agenda, item 25, I believe, we're going to be discussing a lot of budget priorities. This would obviously affect some of our decision-making processes. How it plays into the overall picture of investment and future investments is the real question and challenge, as I've highlighted earlier. One thing that I have learned, being in the business myself for the last couple of years, we still have empty beds for a great deal of season. So when asking whether or not another investment would serve the purpose to fill and place heads in beds, the answer through marketing is clearly yes. You want to try to put heads in beds. That's what generates that TOT dollar for our general fund. There's room for growth, potentially. Now, if that, if that TOT dollar was maxed out essentially because there was no more capacity, no more beds to put heads in because it was filled annually, then there would be a problem there. No room for growth. What do you do? You start expanding. You start building more motels. You start launching more single-family residents to capture vacation rental markets. That's how growth occurs. But right now, with the market growth we've seen, and Barbara could probably highlight this better than me, just since my few simple, simple, short years, five and a half years in the business myself, I've seen a starting point, five years ago, of 17 single-family residents in the vacation VRB-type markets, and I've seen that grow to over 150. There's no question in my mind that's contributing to TOT, general fund revenues here in this county. That reinvestment, I think, is extremely smart for us. It's been fairly stagnant for the last 10 years, and as I've said to Director Palmer, you guys aren't asking enough. And at the same time, I get frustrated because I've looked back at our records and I see expenditures by our Visitors Bureau we're carrying over funds, and that upsets the heck out of me. And so there's a fine balancing act, especially when we have a group like the Klamath Chamber of Commerce that comes to us and says, hey, we want to do our share. We want to do our job marketing. How do we get there? Especially when I've got a sheriff I need to turn to that's got to provide public safety from the Oregon border down to Klamath. And so there is our fighting balancing act. There is our challenge, and I'd like to turn to Supervisor Berkowitz, because Supervisor Berkowitz is the one who actually placed a lot of this Klamath piece of the discussion on our agenda today. Please weigh in with your thoughts, Supervisor.
One of the things you should know, or actually should notice, our chairman's passion for marketing, because he knows that marketing equals revenue. How does he know that? He spent years on our Chamber of Commerce with one goal in mind, to increase our marketing through our TOT. He was able to do that, and I think one year gained $100,000 for marketing from both the city and the county. What happened? Our revenue spiked as long as we had that commitment. When that commitment ended, basically, the revenue to both the city and the county deteriorated. This is why, especially both of us, because we served on the Visitors Bureau, that basically got this kind of revenue commitment from both the city and the county. So we know that marketing equals revenue, and revenue pays for the Sheriff's Department, the Auditors Department, Social Services, auditors, everyone else. So this is one way that we guarantee that we can get the revenue that we need to be able to support the county. He won't toot his own horn, of course, all right, but I will, because he's been an important driver for this. So I suggest that our county TOT should be reevaluated. When one area of the county contributes almost a third of the county's TOT and yet receives a little more than just 2% of the total county's TOT for marketing, it's time we take a fresh look at that total allocation and have it reflected in next year's budget. I would like to see that the Klamath Chamber of Commerce has the resources to run a multi-year marketing campaign with the goal of getting visitors to spend not one day in Klamath, but four days in Klamath, instead of just that one night stopover that a lot of them have. In order to accomplish this objective, I'd like to propose a solution. Now, I realize that we can't move this forward until another meeting, but I'd still like to propose it and see if we can get somebody to say yes or no or whatever. I'd like to propose that the Chamber of Commerce in Klamath receive 60% of the TOT generated by Klamath businesses each year for a three-year commitment. The objective should be to increase the TOT generated by Klamath businesses for each of those three years. I'm a big believer in measurable objectives, and I don't want to just give away money with no obligation. So I'm going to say that the Klamath businesses must increase their TOT, their total TOT, by 20% for the program to be considered a success. Now, if the Klamath Chamber of Commerce makes their goal for the three-year objective, then the program would be extended for another three years. This way, when we increase that TOT and we meet our objectives, we're going to have more money into the county to support the other kinds of operations that we must pay for. Now, look, I'm a realist here, and I know that Jeff is saying, holy smokes, where's that money going to come from? I sure hope it doesn't come from the Delano Chamber of Commerce. Of course it doesn't. I'm hoping that we won't have an impact on the Crescent City Delano Chamber of Commerce. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to find some other resources to be able to pay for this investment in our future. And so I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, that you will be able to bring this up as an item or a plan that we can vote on at the next meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor. Comments from the board? Supervisor Hammison?
Yeah, I guess, I guess different people are hearing different things. I guess the main thing that I'm hearing is that the Delano Crescent City Chamber and Visitors Bureau is not doing their job. We made a commitment, or made a commitment the first year that I was on the board, that we would commit funds to the Visitors Bureau and Chamber of Commerce to promote Delano County. And evidently, they're not promoting Klamath, is what I'm hearing. So if we were to give funds, it would certainly have to come out of that pot of money, would be my, would be my thinking. And it's amazing to me that different people see different things in graphs. When we have contributed the same amount of money, the city has backed off a little bit on their contribution, and yet TOT continues to rise. So I don't know that that correlation, you can run that correlation between TOT tax and the amount of visitors we get. I think it's along the lines of what has been presented today in, it depends on weather, it depends on fishing, it depends on a lot of other things other than just TOT. We could put a lot of money into TOT and have no fish, and I don't think we're going to gain much. So I don't see that, so I'm not trying to be negative or anything, you know, and I want to continue with the commitment that we've made, you know, to putting into tourism. But I just, I don't see the numbers come back to the general fund, other than the TOT portion of it. If you're talking about giving 60% away, that, that doesn't make sense to me, but that's just me.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Gitlin.
Well, some hard choices have to be made. Klamath is a gateway property. That's the first impression people from the South come in as they come through, Klamath, and are they driving through or are they staying over? I want to make sure I have my numbers correct, Kylan. I'm showing 2016, 17 of $72,583. I'm showing not the $74,000 that John Thompson mentioned, but 72. As a numerator, over a total of $455,72. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe.
That comes out to about 16%.
16, 17%.
Yeah. About 16, 17%. And you're getting back, return on your investment, you're getting back $2,500 back on what you put in. Clearly, there's a disparity there. So I know there is a figure that can be worked on and looked at, and again, a lot of this is, how do we look at our budget? We have hard choices to make, but I think an adjustment should be made. I don't know that exact number of that, so I can't commit to Supervisor Berkowitz's number of that amount until I know more information from the auditor controller. But clearly, there has to be an adjustment made for the amount of monies that you and your 75-plus members are contributing and is what you're getting back in services. So having said that, I think the dust has to settle, and we need to look at this, and this will come up in budget discussions, no doubt, in the next meeting or two. But I see that there needs to be an adjustment made.
Can I make one comment on the proposal Bob made? I really like the idea of us being measured by our own success in terms of increasing the TOT. That is our goal through the marketing campaign, and any proposal that we have, we should be able to measure it by increasing that TOT.
Supervisor Kellen.
I think Johanna said she doesn't like the idea of tax, and I just want to say that I'm, I'm for a tax. Again, I pay it every time I leave town, and I think 8% is quite low. You know, even if we were to get to that 10% to match the city, I don't think that's unreasonable, and I think that's going to help all of us in the long run. I, too, also agree that the $2,500 is a little and needs to be increased. I don't think I share the same sentiments as Supervisor Berkowitz to tune to 60%, because, again, that comes from our general fund, and it takes away from the sheriff's office and other needs that we need. But I think there's some type of a calculation. I think we need to look at things. We certainly have increased over the years our intake, but haven't passed that along. I also know that the Chamber here does do a lot of promoting for Klamath. I'd hate to say that they're not doing their job, but maybe that should be looked at as well. Because I guess when I look to the Chamber up here, it's Delano County, and I consider Klamath Delano County. So I would look and say that we are spending money in Klamath. I just picked up a bunch of the maps for the restaurant yesterday, and Klamath is clearly on that. So I know that they're doing a lot of advertising down there. So maybe the idea of working together needs to come more to fruition. And I know that hasn't happened in the past, but I do see everybody kind of working together much better than in the past. So maybe that's the answer, too. I don't know the exact answer to everything, but I think we need to look at it and see where we can go. I'm open to that.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify something here.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
We've talked about not 60% of the entire TOT would go to Klamath, but 60% of just what Klamath contributes.
Understood. Thank you very much. So obviously, we need to carry this discussion maybe into another meeting, because this was not set up for action. This is really set up for edification. The Chamber, the Board of Supervisors really hasn't had a lively discussion around TOT for almost a decade now, and it's long overdue, especially given the growth within TOT and our general fund. This discussion is very timely. How we get there on an approach on reinvestment, time will tell. Obviously, it comes with a great deal of discussion with our CAO. Obviously, he's got priorities and departments he needs to look out for within that general fund and how that weighs out with our public safety options. So going forward, Supervisor Berkowitz, since you did bring this to our attention, we will bring this back as for discussion and possible action at our next meeting. We'll try to frame it specifically around TOT allocation to the Klamath Chamber of Commerce then for that particular discussion. We'll work with the CAO on maybe how best to frame that discussion if it comes in, maybe with our budget priority obligations. I know we're going to have some more news on where we're at with our fiscal year budget today on item 25, so we'll ask the CAO to help us frame that conversation at our next meeting. CO, I don't know if you need to add anything at this time, but...
No. Any addition that I would come up with is going to be related to your budget, the responsibility for the, for the overall services in the county. You mentioned I have to look out for those. I'm looking out for a balanced budget, but the board is looking out for is the allocation of resources with a recommendation that comes from the budget team, and that's coming really soon. And that's coming really soon. Early September, there will be the start of the public hearings, and by the end of that, there has to be a balanced budget. And, you know, we're fluctuating right around a million-dollar deficit right now.
Correct. So that being said, we'll carry this discussion over for our first meeting in September, and really appreciate the folks from Klamath Chamber of Commerce and the Delmore County Chamber of Commerce here today, plus our local businesses that came up to support this lively debate. Look forward to seeing you again in September on this discussion. Given that, we're going to go ahead and move forward to item number 23, which is approve and recommend the draft list of local streets and roads projects for the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 to be included in a component of the final adopted 2017-18 Delmore County Budget, as requested by Director of Community Development. Good afternoon, Ms. Constable.
Good afternoon.
We are here.
Yes. Today, I bring you a board report regarding some funding that has become, will be coming available following the adoption of Senate Bill Number One, which was signed by Governor Brown on April 28, 2017. This bill is referred to as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. The purpose of the bill is to help repair and rehabilitate our local streets and roads. The funding for the, for the bill is based on increases in per gallon in fuel, diesel, and vehicle registration fees. Beginning on November 1 of this year, the state controllers office will be, begin collecting those funds, which will be placed into an account and will be apportioned to cities and counties throughout the state. Estimates provided to us by the CSAC are about $335,000 for this first fiscal year, and we have been asked to put together a project list that must be adopted in a final county budget or state or local jurisdictions budget that identifies the projects that we propose to complete. And we would like to, we have presented a list today of six projects that are chip sealed located within the Fort Dick area. You know, following your discussion about this, what we would like to do is to put together a package which would go into the final budget. I believe recently, since we prepared this, CSAC has provided us with a draft resolution that should also accompany this paperwork. But I have our road superintendent with me today, and we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board. Supervisor Gitlin?
So Heidi and Jeff, if you wouldn't mind joining it. Total amount of spending for 2018 on SB 1 funds is 408,000, 406,000, I'm sorry.
The 406,000 is what we estimated the materials would cost to do all six of those projects. The amount of money that we're estimated to be receiving is 335,000, but the guidance that we were given through the California League of Cities, CSAC, and SEAC was to put together a list that would exceed the amount that we're expected to receive.
So my observation is, we are Delmore County, but almost all of the work is being done in one geographical area. Could you explain why it's not maybe interspersed around the county where other, all members of the county will benefit from the SB 1 funding?
Absolutely. So this is a, this is a funding source that'll continue for years. So we have a program within the department that we have split up the county in 10 different segments for chip seal, identifying these roads as being the worst that we need to actually give a resurface on. So this is the first round of spending, then we'll go to the next segment in the county. Not saying in, in future years, if the dollar amount rises, there's, there are some other roads that will be paved or, or chip sealed, but we generally like to stay in that one region because Moben, mobilization, getting the rock, you know, you don't want to be spread out all over the place. It's kind of wasting money and time. So we like to stay in one little region and pick those particular roads that are, are bad in that area.
So that would be for the entire calendar year 2018, starting when the funding mechanism kicks in after November. So January on, I don't know what kind of work you can do during the rainy months, but from January till December, you're going to be working on six projects and chip sealing. Is that correctly?
That's correct.
So the other needs will, what, happen in 2019, 2020? SB 1 is continuing funding.
Yes, yes. We will continue to present these lists annually, and perhaps after we get past this first year, we can come together with some alternatives, or you can, we can talk about alternatives now. But this was the first list that we found that identified a geographic area financially, it fit with the amount of money that was going to be available. I believe it's going to be upward of a million dollars that will be annually beginning in the following fiscal year. So we'll be looking at a bigger pot of money. But we do understand that we want to hit everyone's district. That's important, and we have needs throughout the county. This was just the first one we, we selected.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
May I make a suggestion here, considering that 80% of these projects you're doing right now are in one district, that you come back with some projections for the next four years of road projects that will hit all five districts, all right? Because I, I think that unless you do that, I've already had some discussions with some constituents that said, "How come none of these projects are in District 5?", and I have no answer for that.
We can certainly do that. I mean, we do have projects that we are seeking funding for in District 5, so hopefully, we'll have some good things coming your way. But in the meantime, yeah, we can put together a list for the next agenda that would have several years rolled out as far as what we would be looking at, because as Jeff mentioned, we have these lists, I mean, identified by geographic area, identified by the pavement condition index for the roads within those areas. We know, well, he knows from a day-to-day basis, from working in the field, where those areas are. So yes, we will return at the next meeting with that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring you back to the board. Don't all jump at once.
Hey, I'm good with it. So I would make the motion that we approve the draft list of local streets and roads projects and Repair Accountability Act component, as requested by the Director of Community Development.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. We're going to go ahead and move to item number 24, which is consideration of miscellaneous legislative items. Jay?
California is back in session now, dealing with items that were in the suspended file. There are a few bills that I'll kind of give you a heads up on, AB 1250, which is, again, still a hot topic. The State Department of Finance just came out with a negative review of that, and we're hoping that at that point, it should kill it. That is part of the contracting, it's a bill that would limit local contracting based on the financial commitments and the amount of analysis that would be required, whether you issued a permit or issued a contract through force account or otherwise. And every county out there that I'm aware of is in opposition, and now including the State Department. So we'll continue to follow that. There are a few bills that are still showing as opposition through RCRC, and we're following those. There hasn't been any hearing yet on those. I expect those to be this week and next week, to see where they go from there. Again, they're back in session, so they're going to take up some of these bills, and we'll see whether or not they make it into September. And I think it's the 12th or 14th. If they don't get any traction by then, one way or the other, likely, they're going to die at that point for this, this year, but we'll see.
Very good. Questions for Jay? Public comment on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board and move to item number 25. Review the current budget priorities and obligations and give direction to staff as to any new or re-prioritized positions or services requested by the county administrative officer. Jay, we're, obviously, in light of today, there's probably going to be some reconsideration that may or may not weigh into how general fund revenues are allocated or reinvested for this coming fiscal year, the fiscal year that we're in. Knowing that, and how we proceed with this discussion today, please help enlighten us on how this rolls forward.
Well, in, in this report, and then previously, I think probably three opportunities, I've given the outline of the budget process and the timelines for this actual fiscal year. And September 12, there will be a request to open the public hearing for 14 days to consider the final budget. Final budget has to be balanced. It's either going to be done through projections or actual changes that are made. We've been looking at the 100 budget, which is the general fund expenditures and revenues, and looking at the year-end in order to project out what type of revenues might be able to expand it, and then also looking at individual department requests that are still out there, and what has been requested, and who has requested the most. And we will be meeting with those departments this week and next week to try to get some of that whittled down. There are also some funds that we deal with annually, insurance funds, whether it be health or otherwise, that based on projections, we may be able to adjust in order to bring that number down. But with accounts payable and receivable still coming in last week, we were still at a million dollars at that point, and that's primarily the general fund. So we have some, some significant amount of dollars to, to basically cut before we get to a balanced budget. As was discussed in the last, the TOT discussion, there are limited discretionary funds out there, property tax, sales tax-related, triple flip, and TOT is a small one of that, but it's still a significant discretionary fund that is used at this point. The bulk of it is then used for the general fund for providing services. And in this report, I outlined a lot of the mandated services that are still in the general fund, and, you know, not to point out Heidi's department, but virtually every division of her department has mandates that are also general fund. And so when you, when you talk about hers, and again, not to point her out, but you've got building, planning, engineering, environmental health, code enforcement, all of these are decisions of the board on what level we fund those. And, you know, we are not looking at surplus money in a, in a typical year. We're looking at where we can get to a balance. The cost of doing business continues to roll, and this board understands that. I, you know, I know we have some, a couple of new members that have, have come into the county and are wondering, you know, what are these sources? We've outlined those through the budget, but the sources are limited on revenue. You know, you're, they just are. And catching up with expenses can be very dependent on what happens with the state of California and what they do on their end. The governor has made decisions that affect public safety considerably. A lot of those were downplayed when Prop 47 and Prop 57 were being, when they were being supported at the state level, and maybe not necessarily locally, but the true cost of that, I don't believe, we, we haven't seen it yet, but we are starting to absorb that through the jail. You know, it's a situation where, you know, we, we talk about where our sources come from, they are not keeping up with expenses. That's just simply where we're at right now. And we will do everything in our power to balance the budget with the two top priorities that are listed in here right now, which are maintaining current service levels and funding mandated programs. You know, those are the, those are the two top priorities that the board has given me in the past, and there's really not a lot of movement on those. When we move down to contingency and capital improvement budgets and annual debt service, we have some obligations there. The contingency, as you know, is a fund that is used for those types of issues that pop up during any given year, and is a very, very, very small percentage of our general fund. But it tends to be used on an annual basis for, for varying issues that pop up that can't be projected or anticipated. The capital improvement budget, again, that's another one where we're looking at our own structures and what we need to do for fairly significant maintenance. And last year, it was the roof over this building. We do have some other needs. That one, we have zeroed out in the past in order to balance. The annual debt service obligation for the Border Coast Airport Authority is a new obligation, that's 90-some thousand dollars. And although it's not due until next June, we anticipate that they're going to send us a letter saying they can't pay for it. So there may be, there may be some movement on that for the board to consider beginning the payments in the following year, because you're essentially paying back the general fund, but we'll have to discuss those when we get to the last push. The general reserve was another priority that came up in the last few years, and we did fund that in one year. We were not able to do that last year. And then, looking at the county engineer position, as well as the resource-related position within community development, we, it does not look like we'll be able to fund a full-time county engineer position this year, and we'll continue on with the part-time. And then, as far as a resource-related position, you know, we're, we would struggle to be able to fund that also. So, you know, right now, I think, you know, the input that we would get back from the board as to those eight, you know, the shuffling below number two, so three on down, the priorities there would be the board's much more discretionary than the first two. The first two involved in maintaining current service levels means positions typically.
Very good. Comments for Jay? Supervisor Berkowitz?
Mr. Chairman, for the third time, I'm going to recommend that we have the budget include an amount for all five districts that would be for non-county maintained roads included in this next budget.
Thank you.
So as the board considers that, and it would have to be a consensus of the board of supervisors to include that at this point as a priority, I would make a, you know, a request as to what you would like to look at reducing in order to pay for such a, a request. To be honest with you, that request for each district not coming with a set amount of money needs to be more clear, but also, if you're going to commit money to each district, how you're going to implement that, and then dealing with the Community Development Department, because this, who's going to do these road improvements? How are they going to be done? That's, that's a bigger discussion than just allocating.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to elaborate?
Please.
Sure. I'd like to see that we can put $20,000 as a discretionary fund for each supervisor to decide on what non-county maintained roads there would be that would qualify for this in his, his or her district. As far as the policy is concerned, and as far as the implementation, I would leave that up to, I would leave that up to you. How it's being done and where the money is going to come from, that's not my responsibility. I'm going to say that that is the CAO's responsibility, or to delegate it, but I'm not going to buy into that. You know, I'm not going to, to go into somebody else's purview as far as where the money's going to come from. Not my obligation.
Chair?
Please.
So that's $100,000, Supervisor Berkowitz. Where are we going to cut to get, right now, we're a million dollars off.
Correct.
We have priorities. Now you want to take another $100,000. Where do you want that to come from? What, where do you want to cut it from?
Did you not, did you not, did you not hear me, what I just said? I said it's not my responsibility, it's the CAO's responsibility. I'm not going to tell you what... I'm not going to tell you what to cut, all right? The CAO may recommend, may recommend what's going to be cut, but it's not coming from me.
It was my understanding the budget is our responsibility, not the CAO's.
It is our responsibility to propose.
So where would you like to, where would you like to cut?
CAO.
To clarify, my responsibility is to provide a balanced budget to the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors' responsibility is to decide what they would like to fund with those through priorities. So in giving you this opportunity again today, I think it's about the third opportunity that I've talked about this, the board of supervisors are going to have that process through a public hearing. I guess I haven't been clear enough through the three or four or five times that I've brought this forward outlining what that process is, but there is a, there's a 14-day process where changes can be made to the budget by the board supervisors. If you request me to come forward with a balanced budget, I'm obligated by law, obviously, these priorities will set that table. If the board tells me through these priorities that you want $20,000 for each one of those districts, I'll put it in there. But the cut that comes from that, the board has to understand is coming from the general fund. And you need to, you need to prioritize in order to have some semblance of order and agreement when it comes forward.
Thank you.
Asier?
Yes.
I'd like some clarification from Jay on budget priority number five and fund the annual debt service obligation, I think it's $96,000, essentially paying ourselves back, anticipating that the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority will not be able to pay that debt. Is that cut in stone that we have to pay ourselves back on that time, timeframe, or can that be deferred?
That's what I just mentioned a minute ago, is there's a possibility that that could be deferred because it's essentially the county paying the county.
Okay. Well, are we still entertaining wish lists, Mr. Chairman? Well, I'm going to refer to something I've talked about for years and the enhancement of code enforcement and CDD, and I'm going to use the grand jury document as my backdrop. And I'll, I'll quote right from here, "The abatement budget, according to the grand jury, is insufficient to accomplish the goal of eliminating blight in Delnor County." And the response is, the county agrees. We voted on that a few moments ago. Goes on to say, "However, eliminating blight is not the goal of public nuisance. The purpose, as defined in Delnor County Code Health and Welfare Nuisances Title 7.08120 is as follows," and again, it's the purpose, I'll go on, "the one that I wanted to underscore, it's the intention of the board of supervisors to minimize the burden placed on property owners and taxpayers in carrying out purposes set forth in section A above." And that was having to do with maintaining public safety, talking about putting the onus on property owners to do this job. And it's, it's frustrating because this can be a moneymaker, this enhancement of code enforcement, because the, I'll read from the document again, "The Delnor County Code Section," and that's 7.08, "allows for the creation of a revolving fund. Each fund allows for any costs recovered from nuisance abatement to be deposited into the fund for future abatements by that division. The largest and most common form of repayment to the division comes from the repayment of liens placed by the county on abated properties following Chapter 7, Title 7, Chapter 08, regarding nuisances." I, I think that there, we, we have to make that investment. 19 people worked on this grand jury and they feel that we need to address this, and we've talked about this for years and haven't. And this actually can be a moneymaker with a small investment in developing our code enforcement department so that it can go on out and seek out additional, put additional liens on property. And when these properties are transacted, then we get paid back and it goes right back into our general fund. So that's a priority with me in terms of putting this together, that we need to make this commitment to an enhancement of funding for code enforcement for the 2017-18 budget.
Thank you. You may not be aware, last night, there was considerable discussion at the city council meeting specific to CDBG funds and allocations for their fiscal year 2016 and then also the coming 2017 fiscal year. Eric Taylor gave a presentation specific to code enforcement and blight. Cities considering at this point for their next meeting, a potential allocation of dollars to code enforcement for the very reasons that you're stating. I'm not sure if it's in our cards this year, but obviously we do have a city and that there is a great deal of focus on blighted properties within the city limits. Hopefully that could help offset some of those impacts that we see countywide, but I'm just not sure if that additional allocation of code enforcement is in the cards this year. I know we did throw an allocation from CDBG into code enforcement this last fiscal year, is that correct? Or I can't remember exactly how that rolled down, but I know code enforcement was impacted.
We did apply for some program income money in order to help with our code enforcement, but unfortunately, we were not successful.
We were denied?
Yeah, yeah, we did try though.
Okay. So I was wrong. Supervisor Hemmingson.
So I got a couple of things here. We've had two proposals now that want to add, are we adding priorities or are you removing a priority on the list, off? Or where, where are we putting these two requests? That would be my concern.
Are you, you asking me?
Well, either one of you.
Well, I, I think I just mentioned the $96,000 from the Border Coast Airport Authority, which is, it sounds like it's an option we can explore about not having to pay ourselves back, and that frees up $96,000. That's one example right there. I don't know if we delete other options on here other than to say that these issues are important to this community. We've talked about it a long time. We have a grand jury report on code enforcement, which bullies our argument to do something about it sometime, not kick it down the road, not kick the can down the road again. And there's an opportunity to actually make some money. I think the code enforcement budget for the year, Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, is $14,000 and change, and it goes, I mean, it's clearly not enough, yet the problems get worse and the ancillary problems associated with not having, cleaning up our county kind of create other problems. So I believe in it. I think it's time that we look at the grand jury's advice and see if we can implement it.
So the last board had a commitment from the Border Coast Airport Authority that they were going to fund the terminal. When that fell through, the last board had no problem borrowing $2.5 million to make that commitment, just out of thin air. I don't know how that happened. I don't know why anybody would do that to, when all of these entities that committed to the terminal decided to just fall off the radar screen that this county was able to borrow off the Mill Creek Fund. And now we're saying, gee, we can't, we can't come up with $100,000 to do this or, or fund code enforcement? I think we can find that money if we really want to do it.
So you're, you're wanting to replace the road improvements to the point of priority and not pay the airport money back? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not exactly what I'm saying.
Well, it sounded like that's what you're saying. That's where I want to, that's what I want to know.
If you want to put words in my mouth, that's, that's up to you, but I'm not saying that. I'm saying that there are other ways that we can fund this. Last board found a way to fund $2.5 million with what? How many, how many hearings did they have on that? Not very many. And so now we're going to get this great terminal that maybe we might be able to turn into a homeless shelter. I don't know.
Cute. So my point is, where do you want to put this road improvements on the list of priorities? And where does the code enforcement come on the list of priorities? Does it come to the end of it? Because it's, it's probably highly unlikely that we're going to get past one or two.
Sure. Well, let me give you an idea.
No, tell me where you want to put them.
I'm exactly going to tell you that.
Okay. Well, don't give me an idea, tell me where you're going to do it.
I'll tell you, all right? I would like to put Mr. Gidlin's proposal for the code enforcement officer, considering that's a revenue generator, as number three, and I'll put this as number four. How's that?
That's, that's the information that I needed to know. I haven't seen the revenue generation portion, I haven't seen the plan that's going to make this a revenue generator, because we've discussed this for a number of years, because when you put into the equation, the staff and the code enforcement officer on top of the $14,000 that we give to code enforcement, it becomes a whole different equation. So I just want to throw that out there. Getting back to another point, the TOT, and then, then we need to know where that goes on the list, but to the TOT, how much do we provide to the Visitors Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce? How is that split up? Jay, remind me of that, would you please?
It's about $84,680, $50. And originally, the intention was about $12,000 to the chamber and the rest to the Visitors Bureau.
Okay. So, so what Supervisor Berkowitz is proposing, that we give four times as much money to the Klamath Chamber than we give to the Delmar Crescent City Chamber?
Mr. Hemmingson, apparently you didn't hear me when I said that I wanted to get 60% of those funds.
Which is how much?
I'll give you, of $74,000, 60% of $74,000, figure the math.
$42,000.
Thank you.
Okay. And we give $12,000, we give $12,000 to the Crescent City, Delmar Chamber.
Actually, we don't. We give, how much to the Chamber of Commerce?
$24,500. The split is approximately $12,000 to the chamber and the rest to the Visitors Bureau.
Okay. And the Visitors Bureau is an adjunct of the Chamber of Commerce. So it's basically the same entity.
Well, that's not the way I see it. You're talking about two different entities.
That's your opinion.
No, that's a fact.
They were two different entities.
I don't have a problem at all with code enforcement and having something of that on our priority. I don't know that I see it as number three, but whether it's four or five, I think Supervisor Hemmingson is correct in that I can't even imagine us getting past one or two this year, but it is nice to have a wish list. And I believe we need to put some priority into code enforcement. As far as giving each of us funds to use at our discretion, I'm not hip on that. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be in agreement to having that as a priority.
These are private roads Supervisor Berkowitz? Would these be private roads? When you say non-county roads, you mean private roads, correct?
These are private, correct. They haven't been put into the county system.
Okay.
Keep in mind that the general public travels on these roads, so it's not exactly a private road.
We all have these roads, yeah, we all have these roads in our districts, Mr. Chairman. You know, you have them up and down your areas, people ingress and they get off the highway and they go on a private road. I, I'm going to use one example, Burchell, in my district, it's, the irony is, at one point, the county used to maintain the road, and then for reasons that I'm not quite sure discontinued, and now the street is just reeked with potholes and the people have tried to fill in the potholes and getting a bulldozer and doing that, it's just been a failure. And you can't get into these neighborhoods, there's 20, 30, 40 homes in there in, in my district, and without putting a new front-end alignment on your car, trying to get into some of these areas. That's just one example. I have, Supervisor Cowan has them in her district, we all know these, these roads, the extension of Butte Avenue goes into its private road and Brevis and these, these areas that you can't ingress and egress, you can't, you can barely drive on them. Now, picture the people there, they're constituents of ours, and they can't get the help, they can't reorganize the neighborhood to fix these things. So isn't it incumbent upon this board to address the needs and how we can help our constituents get in and to and out of their homes? Isn't that part of what we do here? Saying, instead of saying, "We can't do this because it's not a priority," or, "Let's see how we can do this." Maybe the figure isn't 20,000, maybe it's a lesser figure than that, but if we don't address it and we ignore it and we kick the can down the road, we're not doing anybody any good. We're just surviving. And yes, some hard choices have to be made, and these choices have to do with quality of life issues that we all live under. You, in this audience and out there, people are hearing it, you may not have that individual problem, but I assure you that hundreds of thousands of people in Delnor County suffer from some of the problems that Supervisor Berkowitz and I are bringing up today. So rather than condemning it Supervisor Howard and say, "Where are you going to get the money out?" Why don't we work together, try to find out how we can generate these, these revenue streams? And maybe we need to put a little more emphasis in lean, establish liens on property so we get our fair share of this money. And a modest increase in the code enforcement budget from the paltry $14,000 and change to a reasonable amount will help clean up some of our really blighted areas. So I think we should work together in trying to find solutions, not criticizing each other, where are you going to get this and where are you going to get that? Let's look at ways in exploring this before we hit this, this budget deadline.
Very good. I'm in agreement with Supervisor Cowan and some of the sentiments she expressed towards code enforcement. If there was a way we could expand or look at additional revenue sources that could roll into there, I, I don't know what would be available. Specific to the, the private roads, I have a, I have a real problem with that, that concept. I lived off a private road for years, the citizens off that private road banded together to do the pavement work, pothole repairs. I know various people have different levels of income, but it was still, when they purchased property within those areas, they obviously had the knowledge going into it with their deeds that said, "Hey, I'm going to live off this private road, I'm going to be responsible for maintaining it." I, I have some difficulty taking county dollars and putting it into a private road, and that's just where I'm standing right now.
Remember, a lot of these people don't think they're on a private road. You've got to remember, for example, Darby is a street a lot of people drive on, and then I get, I get complaints of people who deliver mail saying, "In the wintertime, I can't even get to the mailbox unless I swim." Because you can't drive on it unless you decide to put your car underwater. We have a lot of these streets that are basically, yeah, they're non-county maintained streets and they need some attention. And I'm saying, if we have in each district just a few that we can give attention to, I think we ought to be able to do that.
Fair enough request, but I don't, I don't think we are in a position to do that this Anyways, I guess, moving forward, staff needs direction on prioritization. We have a list of priorities that we've done in the past, we've had suggestion today to add two additional priorities onto there, specifically additional allocation to code enforcement and then also private roads, let's call them private roads, that's what they are, non-county roads. And to put code enforcement as, I believe I heard to put code enforcement as priority number three on that list, and private roads as number four on that list, and to move the remaining items down, so at this point, create a list of 10 priorities for budget if we were to have additional windfalls somewhere down the road. I, I think that's what it is. I could please clarify if I'm hearing that wrong.
Mr. Chairman, don't forget we have one other decision to make, and that will be the TOT allocation that may come up at a future meeting that also may be on this list.
Correct. And, and, Jay, on your schedule on, on the agenda, I believe that, that discussion could also be had during public hearing, is that correct? Or does it need to occur now?
Yeah, anything that, anything that is attributed to the final budget can happen between the opening of the public hearing and the close of the public hearing. So what typically happens is, there's a 14-day period. In the past, we presented a balanced budget on the 14th or 12th of, you know, whatever the date is this year, and there was a little discussion at the end.
Sure.
The priorities had already been. The priorities had already been set, that's why we're, I've been asking for this for a couple of meetings, but by that time, my recommendations coming forward based on those general priorities, and we've come to a point of balancing. If there's something that happens between there, or we can't get to that point, we'll be back to the board, and there will have to be a decision during those public hearings.
Correct.
Is the board very clear on what the board's role is in this? I, you know, I know that Supervisor Berkowitz has one opinion, but does the board feel that their role, or understand their role in this is to adopt a balanced budget based on priorities?
Correct.
I mean, I, I can certainly do this on my own if you'd like me to.
I think at this point, obviously, the board is going to have a list of priorities that we could potentially fund or not fund, given the balancing of our budget during public hearing. Having those items on the list, however, as a priority, and were they placed as a priority, given how things roll out from one and two, which are obviously at the top of our list, if those get funded, an item three priority per se, if it were to be code enforcement, whatever dollar amount we attached to, then that would be taken into consideration when we went to balance a budget, is that correct?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is a consensus on some form of additional compensation to code enforcement and for the department head's sake, because this is going to go back to the department for them to bring a proposal forward. Are you looking at the liens as the primary funding source on that, or are you looking at a straight general fund contribution to code enforcement through the, the existing fourteen thousand five hundred?
I'll defer that to the proponent of the motion.
Well, I think a combination of both, I don't think we've been aggressive on liens. Clearly, the fourteen thousand dollars is, is insufficient to cover the needs of abating blight in this county, according to the grand jury itself, it's not even my opinion, it's the grand jury, of which Delmar County agrees, but we just did that a few moments ago. So, this can be a potential moneymaker, and it should be a potential moneymaker, it's how we move, how we move forward on it, and aggressively. But I think some kind of an increase to that revolving fund, fourteen thousand, Jay, is that a revolving fund, the fourteen thousand, or is it just an allotment from, from our general fund to abatement? Or does it go in, does it roll over, is what my question is?
It's been a priority of the board, so that was included at the fourteen thousand five hundred amount annually, so it's a general fund contribution.
Okay, and I'm suggesting that it be increased, that's part, part of what this, this meeting is all about today, is you wanted input, not just what you said, this is what we have to do, and then boom, okay, can't do anything about it this year, kick it down the road. Well, we're not kicking it down the road, we're letting, at least two of us are letting you know, Jay, how we feel about the budget, and what's important to us, and our constituents, not us individually, but what our constituents want, and I think would derive a benefit to the county. Now, how we afford it is something that I think we have to do, I haven't met with the auditor yet, to exactly see where the dust will settle, what we can and what we cannot do, and on what level. So I think this is a healthy discussion, and I'm.
Well, I think the entire board is giving me input at this point, and what I am looking for is a consensus from the board. Right now, I'm hearing that, and the department head is hearing that in regards to code enforcement. As far as the balanced budget, that, I mean, there's a lot involved in that, obviously, the auditor controller provides those numbers, the obligation is really on me to provide that final budget with the input of the auditor and the budget team. So yes, I'm, I'm getting the input that I've asked for, obviously, we have limitations, and getting past one and two is, is looking kind of difficult this year.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, and if you, my input would be that we don't change the priorities that are there, I think not funding the airport project, if that gets thrown out, is kicking the can down the road. We do fund code enforcement, so we're not kicking that can down the road, maybe not to the level that some supervisors want it to be. The, the road issue, I think, if we're going to put that on the priority list, should certainly be at the bottom. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Jay, when we go and set these priorities, is there generally a dollar amount attached? Or yes, no, maybe?
In the past, the priorities have been very general from the board, they haven't been specific. As far as a contingency, those are proposals that come out of the budget team based on what we have available to us, but they were prioritized at the minimum amounts that were there in the previous years.
Mm-hmm.
And also based on what the need has been of the county in order to provide either a service or to address the issues that come up through a large budget, a large county budget, on an annual basis. A few years ago, for example, the contingency was used to initiate the funding for all of the, you know, there was a water issue down at the DA's office, we had to fund that in order to get to a point of getting insurance recovery back. There have been times when we've had failures inside of buildings or some other type of issues come up, that's an emergency, and we funded it. The hundred thousand dollars that was put into that, in most cases, was enough to do it, in the case of the year with the DA's office, it wasn't. We had to pull from other areas during the middle of a budget year, you know, service and supply lines and administration and other places in order to, to try to cover it, that's why that was there. But those numbers are reflective of projections and previous amounts that have been needed over the last several years.
I think working towards, at least for me, some consensus on potentially an increase in the code enforcement line item, whatever that might look like, would be some direction towards staff. And, and it could be, and it could be a symbolic amount, or it could be no amount, it could be generalized like the remaining items on this priority list, but it could be, it could be prioritized, if we get to it, we add to that code enforcement budget some, whether it's five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, if there was room within the general fund to show the board took code enforcement seriously. I, I think that would be a compromise per se, that we prioritize code enforcement here, look at it potentially as a revenue generator, and also cleaning up our community, I think sending that message to the public would be needed, but finding that, that dollar amount, I think it's premature at this point, and we generalize it on a priority list. Where that falls, I, I've heard one suggestion as priority three, that wouldn't necessarily be where it falls for me, but I would like to see code enforcement somewhat prioritized on our list of priorities, that's just my, the general opinion.
You know, I'm hearing a consensus, so I would like to meet with the department head, I know she's already looked at revolving funds in the past, we can also look at what that means in regards to projecting out what liens may come in on an annual basis that can be revolved back in. What that ends up doing, just for the board's sake, is if there's a revenue coming in, and it's a straight revenue not going to an expense line, by moving it into an expense line, you reduce the county cost to that department.
Understood.
But I would certainly go back to the department, come up with a solution by the time we start the public hearings.
Okay. Specific to private roads, I, I don't believe we have consensus on that at this time to add it to our priority list, I'm not sure where the board's falling on that. Do we have consensus, board, or?
No, not for me.
Do we need to take a vote, or?
I think if you have a split, you should.
Public comment first. Seeing that, we bring it back to the board. Kylie, specific to a vote on adding non-county roads as a priority to our, what do we call this list again, Jay?
It's a priority list.
Priority list, there we go. Couldn't, couldn't be that simple. Kylie, can you please?
Do I need a motion in a second?
I think we do have one, or, okay, well, do we have a motion specific to adding non-county roads then?
Oh, one minute.
Okay.
I move that we. Thank you. I move that we add one hundred thousand dollars to, to be used at that supervisor's discretion on roads.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
For the purposes of this discussion, I will second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor. Kylie, alternative motion, Jerry?
No, I don't have an alternative motion, so where, where are you putting this on the priority list?
I think I had that at number four.
Okay. And if I can just make a comment is.
Please.
I don't want to be the one to tell my constituents where I'm going to spend four thou, five thousand dollars and where I'm not going to spend five thousand dollars. That is going to be a real issue when you pick one, one road over another road. I mean, the county's got a priority list on, of roads that we go through on an annual basis, and they're prioritized by their need, cost, funding, all those types of things. Man, I wouldn't want to get involved with that, I'd rather leave that to the road department.
Thank you Supervisor.
On that point, I would just say, these are public roads Supervisor Hemmingson, these are not private roads, we don't do anything for private roads, is that what I'm clear on, CDD?
No, you're not clear.
Okay. We don't do any maintenance on private roads, is that all? No, yes?
Well, that's, the proposal is that we do.
No, we don't, we do know maintenance on private roads, I think there's a little bit of confusion, the use of county maintained roads, which is what we do maintain, and then public roads, which have not been accepted into the county maintained road system, which is what Supervisor Berkowitz and Supervisor Gidlin are mentioning, Burchell and Dodane, Darby, or, yeah, which are those examples, but as opposed to a private road, which would be, you know, the roads, Alcoa Parkway Drive, or.
Okay, then I'm the one that's confused, so we're only talking about county, non-maintained roads.
Absolutely correct.
So there's a difference between a county maintained road and a private road?
So this roads, actually, the roads he's speaking about are actually owned by the county but not maintained by the county.
We have a deeded access or deeded easement to those roads, they have been dedicated to the county, they have not been accepted to the road system.
Then I stand corrected, I'm a little confused because this is going to be a lot longer discussion than we could have today.
Let me ask you this, with SB one coming into play, and you already have, and were requested to come back with a long-term plan, is there a chance that eventually, once our roads are maintained, that we can add those to those lists with SB one monies? I mean, what if it had a million dollars a year?
Potentially, we would, we need to bring all of our roads up to a certain pavement condition index before you can start looking at doing other things, you know, looking outside of the box, so to speak, with what you can use the money for, and I don't know how long that'll be, I mean, I think what we're looking at is Superintendent, Road Superintendent Daniels said, we're looking at the geographic areas, and almost by the time you get through with one, you, you start back. That's not to say that it may not be possible, but I know we've had conversations about folks trying to go together to bring the road up to a standard that could allow it to be accepted into the county main road, maintained road system, but that, that can be very costly, especially in areas where you're looking at curbed, better sidewalk, et cetera.
So, oh, you're right there Heidi, so are you saying we cannot bring those into the county road system unless they're brought up to a certain level?
That is correct.
If they're a county non-maintained road as opposed to a private road?
That's correct, well, I mean, a private, well.
Is there different criteria to bring that into the county maintained?
I would actually leave that to our county engineer and engineering staff to answer. I do know, though, in order to accept it, it does need to be brought up to a certain standard, which should comply with our public road standards, it gets kind of complicated.
Because at that point, then, we would receive money.
That is correct.
To maintain that road, so it seems to me, we would be better off to try to get those into a county maintained road system, if they're that important, then it would be for us to fund that out of the general fund. Just a thought.
Let me comment on that.
Please.
As you know, many of the roads that we have, that are going to be covered by SB one, are main arteries, we're not talking about main arteries here, we're talking about those streets, and they're basically streets, that all of a sudden, you see pavement, and then all of a sudden, you don't see pavement and you see gravel. And those are the kinds of roads that are non-maintained roads and streets, all right, where people can't maintain these or bring them into the county system. Why is that? Because a lot of the people that live on these streets are on limited income, many on social security, for them to look at an expenditure of twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars just to put sidewalks in and have the, the street brought up to standards is an impossible task, it will never happen. And one of the things that, that those people are upset about most of all, is that because they don't have the money to be able to fill in those gravel streets, they get deeper and deeper and deeper all of the time, and when the rains come, they absolutely flood. And this is the problem with mail delivery. You know, one of the mail ladies said basically that she couldn't deliver because she couldn't get her truck through to get to the mailbox. Well, this is not just one instance, this is a lot of instances, and you have them all in your districts where you have these huge potholes. I'm saying, sure, we can prioritize these, all right, to say, "Let's get the worst egregious offenders some relief," that's what we're talking about, relief that they can't afford by themselves, and that's what we're talking about, non-county maintained roads, not private roads.
Thank you Supervisor. You know, this, this is really generating to a lot broader discussion, I feel absolutely wholly unprepared to have this discussion right now at one o'clock in the afternoon, when we're all in a great deal of low blood sugar situation, it's changed my concept completely, because I misunderstood the, the emotion, I thought we were talking about private roads this entire time. Heidi, if we were to bring this up for discussion at our next board meeting, would Superintendent Daniels be able to give us an idea of really these county roads that are non-maintained, the number, the lengths, I mean?
Actually.
Do we have an idea?
I, I am unsure, we could certainly look into it, too, we could find out. I mean, I think that there are just some key roads that are, are the issues, I mean, obviously, there's some in districts one and five, for sure, and I don't know how many of the rest of you have any that fall under this category.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just not familiar enough with the subject, I guess is what I'm saying, and I'd like to hear more about it. Obviously, there's a motion on the table, I can't, well, never mind, we probably need to.
Well, I think you're right, we need to have a further discussion, but I still go back.
But we still have a motion on the table.
Okay, I'm, I'm not okay with us being the ones, I don't want to say, "I'm going to give twenty thousand dollars," I'm not the expert, I need the road department to say, "This is where it's."
You're right.
You know, I'm not comfortable with that motion of us being the ones.
So, we've got a motion on the table, I think we should probably take that motion up, not to say that this conversation stops at this point, just that the motion specific to the twenty thousand dollars, adding up to a hundred thousand dollars, where the supervisors for each district would allocate that as they saw appropriate discretionary fund, I believe is what you call it, that's the motion on the table?
Let me withdraw that motion.
Okay.
All right, and keep in mind that I'm not married to the idea that each supervisor has to choose, all right? We can leave that up to the road department.
Very good.
All right, we can modify this to whatever situation it works for us.
Thank you. So that motion's withdrawn. Do we need to have further discussion on this topic? Supervisors? No, okay, I see we're all wearing thin at this point. Jay, we're going to go ahead and continue pieces of this at the next meeting, if you can take note for our record, Kylie, go ahead and bring this back to the next agenda review. And we're going to go ahead and move into our board reports, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, are, are we also asking Heidi to bring back information on a revolving fund for code enforcement for that discussion?
I think it would be wise, at this point, to really get the big picture.
Because we've gone through this, I mean, you've got, do you still have that information that we did some time ago?
Yeah, and actually, some of it was what went into the comments for the grand jury report.
Sure.
So, yeah, this is all fresh, so the revolving account, and then, did you want something about the, the county non-maintained roads to report back?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
We'll agenda it separately from the, from the code enforcement piece. Thank you Heidi. All right, thank you Jerry for getting me straight. We're going to go ahead and move to item twenty-six, which is our board reports, Supervisor Gidlin, how about? to item 26, which is our Board Reports. Supervisor Gitlin, how about you kick us off today?
All right. Couple of weeks ago, Wednesday, I attended our bi-monthly meeting of the Pelican Bay Prison Advisory Board Meeting. Current census of Pelican Bay is just under 2,100. The former secured housing unit, which is the D Unit, is rapidly being staffed as we speak, and the ultimate population will be about 450. These are Level 2 inmates, and it should be filled with staff and inmates by mid-October. Last week, I assisted the Curry-Shriners in a fun game of donkey baseball. You should all check that out. It's kind of frustrating to watch. It's a great fundraiser for the Shriners and helping kids get the services at no cost to them, and I was glad to participate. That was held at the fairgrounds. Redwood Coast Transit Authority met last Wednesday, and the authority authorized the acceptance of $317,000 in Prop 1B public transit funding. These funds are dedicated to new vehicles, some of which you already are seeing in and about Delnor County, also facility upgrades and bus stop improvements. The authority also approved a 25 cent per fare increase in adult cash fares while stabilizing the student fare at $1.50 for those students who want to go from College of the Redwoods and travel down to Humboldt State University. Authority also was seeking requests for proposals on transit. The RCA Authority will also review a new pickup and drop-off location, which was moved because of safety reasons in front of Safeway, and accommodate those people who are going into and out of Jed Smith Center. This past Thursday, I attended the Chamber of Commerce mixer welcoming new business, One Love Arts and Parties, located on the Mall on Second Street. Welcome Tiffany Brown. Last week, the Board on Special Session selected interim District Attorney Katie Mix. Welcome aboard, Katie. She was appointed earlier at today's meeting on consent. Katie has been the acting District Attorney since former DA Dale Trigg unexpectedly departed office earlier this year. And this past weekend, I was also privileged to serve breakfast to the vets and families in Klamath while attending the annual salmon festival. That's my report.
Yes, thank you. Had quite a few things going on. Had a couple of different whale entanglement phone conference calls, which are moving right along. Had a conference call with Rob Christensen, who's Senator McGuire's staff field agent, on issues that are pertinent to the county. Had a meeting with Grant Wershko on discussing Congressman Huffman's Wilderness Bill. Met with a couple of people from SEIU In-Home Supportive Services Group. And then we had a phone conference call with Senator McGuire on No Place Like Home stuff. Went to RCRC. A lot of stuff going on down there. Really too much to go over a whole bunch of this stuff, but we had PILT and SRS discussions, tree mortality, Prop 47 allocations with their grant. The way their grant funding has been going along in those counties and cities and entities that have been awarded grants and those that have not, there seemed to be a favoritism towards the urban suburban area as opposed to the rural. So they had a little graph that showed, Prop 47, of course, is to reduce the recidivism, and RCRC adamantly was opposed to this bill. And so they were thinking that we were being unduly restricted on the amount of monies that we may be getting, and it appears to be that that is the case, although that's hard to say. That's only information. We also had a presentation by the Deputy Treasurer, Steve Juarez, and he brought up an interesting thing about sales tax exclusion, not exemptions, but exclusions, that I was not familiar with, and I have to do some more research on that. We talked about cap and trade, which is the reason that we no longer have to pay the SRA fee, community block grants. We discussed Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, updated. There's some information on state waters of the U.S. now instead of waters of the U.S., so that is concerning. And also had some discussion on texts, tweets, and emails from personal accounts on whether that is something that is going to be accessed by the public. I missed our Town Hall meeting here in Crescent City with Congressman Huffman because I was at the RCRC meeting. So on my way back, coming through Weaverville, I stopped in Weaverville and talked to the Congressman, as well as John Driscoll, on his Wilderness Bill. We had participated in the special session and the DA interviews, and we're very happy that Catherine Mix is going to be our DA. And we had a two-by-two with the Talawadini Nation. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I had a telephone conference call with Mr. Lightner, who clarified a lot of the misinformation that I'd received regarding the necessity of lengthening the runway, and I was pleased to see him here today with his presentation. Since our last meeting, Supervisor Cowan and I had an IGRC meeting. We suggested that the city sign on to the letter to our Congressman, calling him to formulate legislation that would fund Last Chance Grade. Mayor Ensco reported on efforts to overcome the stumbling blocks to getting block grant funding to RHS. And like Supervisors Cowan, Howard, and Gitlin, I attended the presentation by Congressman Huffman, talking about the Wilderness Bill. It was very informative. This last Saturday, Supervisor Gitlin and I served breakfast to the veterans as part of the Klamath Chamber of Commerce, prior to the Klamath Salmon Festival. We also meet with, met with new interim Police Chief of the Klamath Tribe, Del Gray. When our Washington, DC lobbyist was here last, he suggested one thing that Board Supervisors, the Boards of Supervisors on our Board, need to do, and that is to be back in Washington, DC, so that our issues are heard. Issues like funding for Last Chance Grade that require a commitment of over $1 billion. Issues like reauthorization of the secure rural schools and communities. The expiration of that funding source has cost us over $1 million in lost funding for our local roads. Issues like keeping our EAS subsidies so that it ensures that we maintain air service in our area. Issues like dredging our harbor by the Corps of Engineers to keep it as a viable port to support our fishing industry. He said, "There's no substitute for being where the decisions are being made, and that's an important area of impact to our area." Because these issues are so important to us, I'll be going back to Washington, DC for three days, three working days, not counting travel, the September 20th through the 22nd, to speak to the decision-makers on our issues, and I'll be working with our lobbyists. Last month, I was extremely disappointed in the fact that I was unable to meet my commitment to attend the policy meeting of the National Association of Counties in Cleveland, Ohio, due to illness. Our Board was able to recover some of the costs of that trip, but not all. So in view of that fact, I'll be paying all of the costs of this trip out of my own pocket. In other words, this trip will have no effect on our county budget.
Thank you for your report, Supervisor. Supervisor Cowan?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go over pretty much what everybody else has done. I also attended the quarterly IGRC meeting, and we had the Park City and County there. We had a conference call with Senator McGuire. Senator Hemmingson pointed out about No Place Like Home. We discussed the application for the technical grant, which we approved today, so that'll be sent out. Once we have the technical grant, we can look at the possible programs that we can implement here in Delnor County. I attended the Business Leaders Round Table with Congressman Huffman. We discussed Last Chance Grade, along with other things. The airport, there was many discussions at the table. It was a very good meeting. An update on Last Chance. The geotechnical studies are underway, and they're scheduled to be done in the spring of 2019. At that point, the goal is to bring the six routes that are identified now down to potentially three, maybe four, and then we can go into the environmental studies. I also attended the Congressman halls for Huffman's Town Hall, the special session hiring Catherine. Thank you, or congratulations. Welcome, well, you're still here, but welcome to your new position. Good luck. We had a Solid Waste Authority meeting. I attended the monthly Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting. I also attended the Chamber Mixer and Ribbon Cutting for Tiffany's new business, which is great. She's been doing it. It's not a new business to her. She just has a new business location. I'm very excited for her. And I had another pretty lengthy meeting with Mitch Hannah to go over all the things that are going on with the hospital. He's out of town, but he did shoot me over an email of some things I'm going to go ahead and talk about. A lot of these things, or some of these things, you've heard me talk about before and that are still going on, the partnership with College of the Redwoods, one that's very dear to my heart. They're meeting, they have a commitment to our local committee, our community, to bring the LBN and the RM program back to Crescent City. Both Sutter Coast and Pelican Bay will host clinical rotations and classroom training for the local nursing students. This is based, this whole program is based on a successful collaboration that they had going on with Sutter Health in Sacramento with, I want to say it was American River, or maybe it says, it actually says Sacramento City College, but I thought it was American River. Anyways, they produce 555 registered nurses, so I'm really excited about that collaboration coming back. Also, the same thing, the collaboration going on with mental health and the stabilization unit. Those talks are still going on. I walked with him back to see the building going on with the dialysis, God, I'm tired, and all the other things, the dialysis, and I think it's a transfusion center that's being built back there. New recruitments. We have a cardiology, Dr. Jules Penn, gastroendocrinologist, the oncologist, a new OB-GYN, and a new psychiatry as well. So those are all new. Talks about, we talked about his ongoing efforts for recruitment, new telemedicine services. Oh, the charges. I know this came up, and he was, I know Mr. Berkowitz, you brought these up. They do have new charges that are being listed. He sent me over the list that is in the ER.
We've all received it.
I make copies if everybody, I don't-
We've all received it.
You've all received the copies of these as well? Okay. I know he responded to the resolution we did. I also got that. So that's about it. He just, you know, we went over a lot of things in our meeting, and I know we still, oh, they're, with MCARE, it's switched. They, you talked about, they're still looking for a new ER provider because I think that was a big, huge, well, it is a big concern. The ER costs here are extraordinary, and it's based on, basically, because we have out-of-network doctors coming in that are being hired by MCARE, and I think MCARE has a new name, so I keep calling it MCARE, but I think it's a new name. So they are looking at a couple of different things. MCARE's looking at bringing in network, but they're also, I say they, the hospital is looking at new providers to replace MCARE. So that's also a possibility as well, and that's in the works, and hopefully that'll help to lower some of the costs. Thanks.
And Supervisor, I know you communicate frequently with Mr. Hannah. I don't want him to be fearful about presenting to the Board. I know oftentimes we get long teeth when he's here, but I know the Board in the past has requested that he be here to present this type of information. I think we did ask him to present the information you have now presented. It would be good to hear from him directly. Please ensure that the welcome ad is always open for communication with the Board, specific to Sutter, and that we're appreciative that he's responded to some of the questions and needs that we've requested.
And I think he knows that, and I think his intent was come to April 22nd. We had kind of had it set, and then something came up, and he had to leave town. So I said, well, could you send me something to give him an update, because we had requested for him to come back.
Please, please let him know. We'd like to have him back on the agenda. Thank you very much. And then I'll wrap this up fairly quick. The Summer Youth Showcase, Smith River Neighborhood Watch, we're still dealing with the abatement issues. Did attend the abatement hearing where the hearing officer did rule on the Pink Hotel. So hopefully, we'll get some movement there in September, I believe September 15th, but progress is being made. It's somewhat slow for the community, I do realize, but progress is being made. Having a great deal of discussion with Gasky residents, specific to some trailer park issues and code enforcement, and how best to deal with those when we feel like our jurisdiction doesn't revolve around HCD. And how we get there is going to be a real question. Had a meeting with Joe Gillespie, specific to the Wilderness legislation. Also had a meeting with code enforcement, specific to some ordinances that are affecting District 3. Gender review, Delnor Solid Waste Authority meeting, as mentioned, the meeting that we all attended, specific to Congressman Huffman's Wilderness Bill proposition. I know Supervisor Hemmingson, this is near and dear to your heart. I know you definitely would have been there if you could have been, but this discussion has not ended, and of course, we will bring this into our Natural Resources Goals Committee to have continued discussion, to really bring something back to the Board, so we could all decide how best to comment on that draft legislation. The DA interviews, again, welcome. It's good to have you here, well-suited for the position. Talawadini Nation, two-by-two, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned. Finished my ethics training course just recently. I know we have to renew every two years. It was educational. And I'll end with a big congratulations to Christian Alexander and Callie Broat on their marriage in Ferndale this last weekend. It's great bringing our two communities together with two large dairy families and sealing that deal, and hope they have a great honeymoon this week in Italy. Look forward to having them back because there's a lot of work to do on the farm. We will move to closed session. I'm not sure if we'll have anything to report out after we return from closed session, and then we'll move again to our 5:30-
Mr. Chairman, can we have a 10-minute break before we do that?
We can. Sorry, Jay.
You'll reconvene at 5:30?
We're going to move back into closed session and then reconvene at 5:30 for the cannabis workshop on taxation. We'll recess for 10 minutes and move to closed session. Thank you, everyone.